This is Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez today calling this meeting of the Planning Board, Jersey City Planning Board to order. I'd like to ask everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States, to the Republic. All right, we'll take a couple, maybe a minute here to see if people can join us. Okay, Cameron, I'm gonna take it away with the sunshine announcement.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 28th, year 2021. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. To adhere to the social distancing protocols and best practices, this meeting is being held virtually. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the City Clerk on September 20th, and then re-sunshine on September 23rd. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
Thank you, Cameron. Can I have roll call, please?
Yes, all right, so Commissioner Gangadorn. Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Horton.
Here.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Acting Vice Chair DeCure.
Here, thank you.
And Acting Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, we have seven commissioners.
Thank you, Cameron. Iris, you want to swear in the staff, please?
Yes, please. Steph, raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Yes. Please, one at a time state your full names for me.
Cameron Black.
Timothy Gore.
Timothy Creel.
Mallory Clark.
Thank you. Steph is sworn.
Thank you, Iris. I do have Tanya on there, but I'm not sure if she's with us, but I guess we can swear in if she pops in.
I will make note of it.
Later date, okay. Any correspondence, Cameron?
Yes, okay, so we have two items to be carried. We've got item number nine, the review and discussion of Samuel Potter and Isabel Deverger as certified artist. We had some issue on the website. That will be carried to October 5th. And then we have item number 14, and that is address 203 Baldwin. That is going to be carried, that's case number P21-027. That's going to be carried with preservation of notice to October 5th. So it's the two items, I'll put them in the chat. Again, that's item number nine and item number 14.
Okay, thank you, Cameron. Any old business? Okay. Well, start our meeting with new business. First case to be called up is case number P21-049 for administrative amendment. Address is 133 Park View Avenue. We have Mr. McCann. I do see him there.
He's promoted. And Chuck's raised his hand as well, so I'm promoting him. I don't know if that was a mistake.
Yeah, I see him, yeah.
Chairman, for the record, Commissioner Allen has joined the meeting.
Welcome, Commissioner Allen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. McCann, you're up.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before I go up, Joe Malillo and Brian McLaughlin are part of my team. I just want to, Cameron, can you promote them if you didn't already?
I'm looking for him.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jim McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley. I'm here tonight on case P21-049, representing the applicants LHN Owner Urban Renewal LLC and LHN2 LLC. This is an application for an administrative amendment. It's very simple. The applicant's requesting relief from a condition in a 2014 resolution that it install permanent sidewalks and landscaping on a, in front of a third party's property. The second request for relief is that this board approve the temporary walkway without landscaping that is currently in front of the third party's property. And finally, if the board were to do that, we would be asking you for two minor deviations. One is from the sidewalk with requirement in the redevelopment plan, and the second is from the forestry standards in the JCLDO. This is a notice case. Good evening, counsel. I see you there. I did file two separate affidavits of service and publication some time ago.
Thank you, counsel. Good evening to you as well. Chair, I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. I do have two separate affidavits. And all does appear to be in order, so we're gonna mark those as A1, the entire package. Mr. McCann, just a little housekeeping first. Secretary Black, we now have eight commissioners on the screen, so naturally all can participate, however, it would not be appropriate for all to vote, so we'll have to check the role on that. And then, of course, Mr. McCann, I just, I heard your introduction, and I'm curious about the, are you the designated redevelopment? Is that their redevelopment agreement?
That is correct. My client is the designated redevelopment for both properties referenced in the application pursuant to two separate redevelopment agreements.
And is there anything about these two conditions in front of a third-party property?
Anything about the conditions, not following.
Condition in the resolution.
The condition in the resolution does require the applicant to make improvements in front of a third-party's property. The third-party is unaffiliated to my client.
And I guess my, my question is, is the redevelopment agreement silent to that issue?
It is. There's no requirement in the redevelopment agreement. This was a requirement imposed by the Planning Board in 2014 only.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay. Cameron, can you give me the ability to share my screen, please? I just tried, but I can't.
Okay, but two things. Firstly, I can't find Jill in the attendees for your team, and second-
I'm sorry, Joe Malillo, I apologize. Joseph Malillo, he's from Malillo and Bauer.
Okay.
He is there, Cameron.
Okay, I see a Joseph promoting. And then what was the other person on your team?
Ryan McLaughlin, also from Malillo and Bauer.
All right. Now that was Ryan, not Brian.
Ryan, sorry, B-R-I-A-N, Brian.
Gotcha, okay. And then lastly, there is, there was confusion about item 14 on the agenda. We'll announce this again once this case is heard, but 203 Baldwin is not to be carried.
Did you say was not gonna be carried?
That is going on tonight.
Back on, okay.
That is correct.
You could just put that on the chat there.
I will.
Cameron, thank you. Okay. Mr. McCann. You need permission, right? I do. I'm gonna try to be very brief tonight, Commissioners.
We appreciate that, Mr. McCann.
You only said he was gonna try.
I know it's hard for me sometimes, but I'm gonna try.
You've said that to us before, if I recall.
I don't know that you can do it, counsel.
Can, I promise.
All right.
You should be able to share your screen.
Still says host. Let me try it. Can anybody see that yet?
No, nothing.
Try again, James.
You're already going back on your promise.
It should work. The settings are set so that all panelists can share their screen.
Okay. I'm gonna defer. Brian McLaughlin is here tonight. Brian, can you share your screen?
There we go, we're seeing something.
Brian, can you go to the aerial view of the property for us? Thank you. Can you expand that a little bit? Okay, Commissioners, what you are seeing right now is a current photograph, and I know this because I've been out to the site several times myself, of the site, and at the far end of the screen or the top of the screen is the first building that my client constructed. It's one, I'm sorry, it's 33 Park View Avenue. On the side of the screen, that's the parking garage that connects the two buildings, and then at the very bottom of the screen is the second building that my client constructed, 1 Park View Avenue. Both of those buildings are 42-story residential towers, five-story parking garage with commercial on the ground floor. My client also constructed the street that's in front of you, which is known as South Cove. And the grassy area that you see is the third-party's property that I was referring to in my introduction. We commonly refer to it as the hotel site because it's zoned for a hotel. It was initially owned by a hotel developer. In 2014, when the resolution was first adopted, my client did have somewhat of a cooperative relationship with this, the hotel site owner. However, over the past seven years, the hotel site owner has lost title to the property. The hotel site owner was never able to develop this property. They declared bankruptcy, and they ultimately lost title to the property in a foreclosure. So this site is currently owned by a bank. Now, the, the walkway that you see in front of the property, in front of the hotel site, was installed by my client. That was a temporary walkway that was installed. You can see across the street, there's also a temporary walkway. Those were walkways installed pursuant to the initial approval. And what you can also see from the, from the temporary walkway in front of the hotel site is that there are light poles installed. Those light poles are the permanent light poles that are also installed around the rest of my client's site. So the lighting is already installed. The reason that we're here tonight seeking relief from a requirement that we put permanent sidewalks in front of the hotel is not because we really don't want to do it, but it's because it's almost impossible for us to do it. If you look at the far end of the site, you can see that there's a, a fully built-out sidewalk there that is 13 feet wide, and it's made of concrete. Now, what you can also see from that is if my client were to install a full-width temporary sidewalk in front of the hotel site, it would be required to use about five feet of the hotel site property owner's property. We do not have any kind of a license or relationship with that person's, with that, with that bank, with that bank at this point, so we cannot go on that property and install the permanent sidewalks. The other issue is that there's a, was a significant grade change made when the street was developed. So the grade of that temporary sidewalk is about three or four feet higher than the grade of that hotel site lot. So my client would have to make a significant investment in that site to bring in fill, do a significant amount of, of of engineering work, and even to attempt to install permanent sidewalks. So what we're asking you to do is allow us to keep what you see there. We're asking you to approve that as the, the condition. And I guess the third reason why we're asking you to do this is because although it was imposed in 2014, it kind of never made sense because hopefully somebody's gonna develop that site, and anything permanent that was installed there, landscaping-wise and sidewalk-wise, would get destroyed and, and would have to be rebuilt anyway, so it is kind of a waste. But the real reasons are the, the topography and the fact that we do not have permission to enter this property. So we're hoping that you will understand that and waive the condition for the permanent sidewalk, which would be 13 feet wide. The sidewalk that's there is eight and a half feet wide, the walkway. So it's plenty wide enough for pedestrians. Also, the lighting is there, so it's, it's safe. There's enough lighting there for pedestrians walking up and down. That's part of the final approval anyway. And the privacy fence will be lined with a green cover similar to the cover that's across the street so that it will block the vision of the that, the hotel site lot. So that, that's our, that's our request. We're requesting that you approve what you see there. Brian, can you go to the next photo, which I think is the ground-level view? Yeah. So if you're a pedestrian walking from one Park View, my client's project, to the other end of my client's project, that's, that's what you walk on. We think that looks pretty good, and, and we hope that, and you can again see there how much wider the permanent sidewalk is, and how much it would encroach on the other property. So that's my presentation. I do have Joe Malillo available if you have any more questions about the landscaping. He has submitted a plan. He and I have submitted a plan that contains the improvements that you see right there. That's what we're requesting that you approve tonight.
Mr. McCann, just very, very quickly from, from a legal aspect, obviously we would not impose on you or expect you to trespass onto someone else's property and improve it. But your client installed both the lights and this, what we're calling the temporary sidewalk?
Yes, and the reason my client installed it because that is inside, is within the public right-of-way described in the redevelopment plan. My client built out the street and that temporary walkway. It's all within the right-of-way. It's not part of the hotel site property. However, the site plan approval for my client's property required it to use about five feet of its lot to widen the sidewalk. That same requirement would be imposed, and, and I think has been imposed, on the hotel site owner pursuant to their site plan approval, which was granted years ago but never built out. So does that answer your question, counsel?
It does. So you, pursuant to both the redevelopment agreement and the proper site plan approvals, not only built the sidewalk, you improved the street. Has that been dedicated to the city yet? Is it going to be dedicated?
So my client's been working with the Jersey City Engineering Department for several months now to make sure that all aspects of that street, they also constructed the street that you can't see in this picture, but is beyond the Phase 1 building. They've also widened Marin Boulevard, constructed a portion of the waterfront walkway, and widened Park View Avenue. So my client's been working with the Jersey City Engineering Department to make sure that those improvements are all in proper order because, yes, those roadways will be dedicated to the city of Jersey City, but one of the requirements for a dedication is that you, you work through the engineering components of, of the, of the, of the dedicated improvements.
And was the property that is now the street and the right-of-way, which includes the sidewalk, was that a separate lot then where the towers were developed?
Yes.
And that was owned by your client at the time, obviously?
Actually, the, the street lot is owned by the JCRA.
Okay. And the same thing then where the sidewalk, the temporary sidewalk, which was, or is, right of way?
Yes, sir.
And does the JCRA, or I guess the city, really have the power to condemn the hotel site, as you call it?
Well, I'm not gonna comment on that because, just as a matter of public record, I know there's still litigation that does not involve my client, but may involve the JCRA and other parties. So I don't, I don't want to overstep my bounds here, but because that, the, the owner of the hotel site was at one point a designated redevelopment also was.
Which was, okay. All right, Chairman, first and foremost, this body is never going to require anybody to develop property that they're unable to go on to and develop. That's, that's not something that, that we ever do or would, would put on somebody. So I think for that reason alone, counsel is clear as to the position with respect to the hotel site. Mr. McCann, the only thing I'm slightly hesitant about is liability going forward as a result of the, the temporary sidewalk, but it sounds to me that perhaps city engineering is not done. Could they enforce some kind of permanent sidewalk in that area? I mean, it, it's blacktop right now. I guess the reason it's blacktop is because eventually it was gonna be permanent concrete side.
I, I think that's correct, yes. Designed in accordance with the redevelopment plan.
Yeah, is, is part of the request to leave that in a temporary condition of blacktop mechanic?
Yes, but, yes, that's the request, and not to require my client to take any further action pursuant to its site plan approval. If another agency requires something else, we would come back, what would have to come back to you, I imagine, but I don't think that'll happen. But you can only do what you can do.
And is that a curb in the picture? Is there a change for the sidewalk?
Sure, there is, yes. That's a fully built-out street with a curb designed in accordance with the engineering requirements and regulations for public streets and curbs.
All right. I'm not gonna pretend to be anything more than, than a lawyer, so I'll let anybody else comment on that.
Mr. McCann, was that, that was the end of your presentation?
Yes.
I, I have a question for Mr. McCann.
Commissioner Torres, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. McCann, the, so if this gets approved and it stays this way as a temporary in front of the hotel, which is obviously used, cannot do anything with that property. What happens when they take the fence down across the street? ADAT's gonna fix the sidewalk that's blacktop across the street from the road, is that fence gonna stay up for, up to somebody develops the property?
So it's the same on both sides, Commissioners. My clients, the applicants, were required across the street only to install a temporary sidewalk because that is another development site owned by another developer, so.
Okay. So if they take the fence down and the JCRA does not put a sidewalk, you know, designate someone to do it, we would have just an asphalt sidewalk across the street too?
Well, there's already a designated redevelopment for that site. They just haven't built it out yet.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Torres. Any other questions?
I have one question. Commissioner Horton.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. McCann, for everything. I don't know if this falls to you or maybe Mr. Santo, but is there any ADA compliance issues with this as far as temporary sidewalk width, you know, if there's a curb, is there a ramp, things like that, that we need to be concerned with?
So, so all around the property, the ADA permanent ramps and, and, I forget what they're called, the depressed curbs, all around the permanent, all around my client's buildings, those ramps or, or depressed curbs have already been installed in accordance with ADA regulations. In fact, that was done over the summer. One of the final things to be done on the permanent sidewalks. This walkway, I know, is wide enough to comply with ADA requirements, and it's completely flat, so anybody that has, anybody in an ADA situation would be able to use the permanent ramps to get up onto the sidewalk and then wheel themselves along this, this asphalt because it, it is it is ADA compliant, so to speak.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? No one else? Mr. McCann, I don't think we need to hear from Mr. Malillo from my, my perspective, but anyone want to hear from him? Okay. So I think without further ado, I'll open this up to the public. Mr. McCann, if that's okay with you?
Yes, that's fine. I'll waive testimony from Mr. Malillo.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna open this up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this case P21-049? You can raise your hand, or if you're calling in, it's star nine. Anyone, anyone from the public?
Mr. Chair, seeing normal public, I would like to close the public portion of the meeting.
Okay, public is closed now.
Second.
Okay, whose is this?
This is mine, yes. Staff doesn't have any additional comments. I think Mr. McCann has really covered the scope of, of the ask here tonight. We would just add that any of the other conditions of approval with the original application approvals would be upheld through this amendment. And I guess the one question would would just be, I just want to clarify if there's a timeline on when that visibility barrier will be installed within the chain link fence in the photo.
Uh, it's one thing I didn't think to ask, but um can I can I make a representation of thirty days? And then come back to Mallory if for some reason I need it to be a little bit longer, we'll put it in the resolution. Okay, noted.
Mr. McCann, just before we call the roll, do you have to go back to the J C R A at this point?
I do not because the J C R A doesn't cover this. The J C R A never required us to. Install any improvements in front of the hotel property. This was solely a condition. Imposed upon my client at a two thousand fourteen planning board hearing. So so there's nothing for us to know. We don't need any consent or permission from the J C R A on this.
And the only thing left for your client to do is to. Finish the dedication of the right of way to the city. Is is that fair?
Yes, that is fair.
Okay, Chairman, I have nothing.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Takor.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case P two, one dash zero, four, nine with staff recommendations.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Acting Commissioner or Acting Vice Chair Takor. Commissioner Gangadin. Commissioner Horton. Uh Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Torres. And Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez. Okay, motion carries all in favor.
You forgot about me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Commissioner Cruz there. Uh Commissioner Cruz.
Yes, me too.
Okay, all right, motion carries all in favor.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners for your time. Thank you, counsel. Good night. Thank you, staff. Bye bye.
Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Good night. Okay, just to reiterate here, the next. Item review and discussion of Samuel Pot and Isabel De Verger as certified artist has been carried. And I believe to a date certain of October fifth. So if anyone's here from the public about that, we have carried that item. The following item next to call up is review and discussion of the Ocean Bayview Redevelopment Plan Amendment. Staff initiated.
Okay, um so I'm going to handle this one. It's quite simple. It can really be boiled down to literally three words, restaurants, cafes. Uh restaurants one and two. So we are amending the Ocean Bayview Redevelopment Plan. To include on the ground floor of the existing retail spaces. The use of restaurants category one and two with cafes. This is a use that is already occurring. And it was in oversight back when this redevelopment plan was drafted. Um, many businesses are functioning as restaurants within this redevelopment plan on the ground floor. And this will alleviate. Many of these cafes and restaurants from having to pursue a variance. So I'm just going to share my screen real quick and. Let me see if this works. Okay, so can you can everybody see the memo from staff?
Yes.
Okay, so. Right here in this sentence. Sums up the entire amendment. Now, there is one thing that we are also adding and every time we are amending a redevelopment plan henceforth. We are also removing the expiration date, and I think we're all well aware of why we're doing that. So. This amendment here has the floor amendment of removing the expiration date. And then it is adding restaurants category one and two and cafes. And then here are just some issues that are identified in the master plan, declining commercial districts, goals. How do we do that? You know, we revitalized these neighborhood shopping districts, promoting commercial uses which serve the related neighborhoods. These uses are being used by the neighborhoods. And then here's a map just for reference for the commissioners. Um, this is the segment of ocean between Clermont all the way down to. That would be Eastern Parkway. Where Bayview Cemetery is. And that's it. That is all that there is to this.
All right, Cameron, that that looks good. Any questions? Anyone? Commissioners, questions for Cameron? It's pretty simple, pretty straightforward. Thanks, Cameron. So now we'll open it up to a pub- the public. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? You can raise your hand. If you're online or if you're calling in star nine. Anyone from the public?
Mr. Chairman. Seeing normal public would like to close the public portion of the. Meeting.
Motion made and seconded, so public is now closed. Obviously, staff, you're recommending that we recommend this to counsel.
Yes, and to give more backstory, there are just residents in the area, local entrepreneurs. That wish to pursue, you know, eateries, cafes, et cetera, and. You know, it it they're being held up momentarily because this redevelopment plan doesn't allow them to do that. And this has received support of Councilman Jermaine Robinson and Planning Staff supports this. And we recommend approval. And recommendation to counsel.
Perfect. Thank you, Cameron. Okay.
Mr. Chair would like to make a motion to approve review and discussion of the Ocean Bayview Redevelopment Plan amendments. Uh, and forward it to the council for.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
Okay, on a motion to approve. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
He's gone.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Takor.
Aye.
Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I think this is a good amendment, so I'm glad that we're for recommending it to a city council for adoption. Thank you. I would I.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, Iris, how are you doing? I don't, there you are. You're okay?
I am fine. Thank you very much. So so far so good.
You're welcome. Uh, let me know if uh we'll we'll take a break here shortly. Okay, I'll call case number eleven on our agenda. It is case P two, zero dash one, four, zero. For preliminary and final major site plan with a sea variance. The address of this is three forty one Johnston Avenue. Mr. Black, Secretary Black is our planner, is the planner and the attorney I can is Mr. Nadell.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, sir.
Cameron, can I ask you to please? Have his panelist, Richard Garber. Mark Shizvett. Catherine Gregory. And Craig Aragoyd.
I see Mr. Garber on already. Hi.
All right, I got them all.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Benjamin Nadell from the law firm of Kamal Foley. On behalf of the applicant, Witten Property LLC. Counsel, just quickly, this is a notice application. I would just ask for you to mark our affidavit into the record.
Thank you, counsel. Chairman, I am receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application of three forty one Johnston Avenue here in the city. Had the opportunity to review it. All does appear to be in order, and we could go ahead and mark that as a one.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel. The property this evening is three forty one Johnston Avenue. It's designated as block one, nine, zero, zero, one. Lots three, four, and five. The property is located within the Lafayette Park Redevelopment Plan area. This is an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with sea variances. To permit the development of a new six-story mixed-use building containing thirty-five residential units. Ten off-street parking spaces and approximately eight hundred fifty-three square feet of retail space. The project is also utilizing the redevelopment plans affordable housing bonus by designating five units as affordable housing units. As will be testified by our professionals this evening, the applicant is seeking three variances for building coverage. Off-street parking and building height. Our witnesses this evening are our architect, Richard Garber, our civil engineer, Mark Shizvett. Our professional planner is Catherine Gregory and our traffic engineer is Craig Paragoyd. Uh, so with that, unless there are any questions, I'd like to call our first witness, Richard Garber, to provide an overview of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Nadell.
Mr. Garber, please raise your right hand. I will spread you in. Do you swear that you will, the testimony that you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth stuff?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name for me. Spoil your last.
Richard Garber, G A R B E R.
And your address, please?
Eighty-three Montgomery Street, Jersey City.
Witness this one.
Thank you, Iris. Uh, Mr. Garber, you are known to us. Is your license current?
It is current, yes. Great, and let me just share my screen. One second. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, so three forty one Johnston is a new building that we're proposing. And let me just make sure that I'm advancing properly. Yep, so what you see here is a. Uh, a rendering we have of the building. Uh, this is a six-story building. Uh, and I'll go through the unit counts and everything, but I want to just say a few things before the board first. Um, this really, we see this and another project that we're actually presenting later tonight, three forty two Johnson. Both as real gateway projects on Johnston Avenue to the 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 park. So they they end up being very important. Um, not only as singular buildings in terms of what they're doing, but also in terms of their contribution as a cluster to the urban fabric. And so um this this application was initially presented to the planning department as an eight-story building. It has since been taken down uh to a six-story building. We are seeking um the affordable housing bonus for this building, and I will go through. Um, that that information now. So you see the site, we are an L-shaped site with primary. Frontage on Whiten Street and about fifty feet of frontage on Johnston Avenue, L-shaped site as you see here. And again, in terms of the zoning map, this is in Lafayette Park. Um, there are three sites that make this up, and again, it's proposed as a six-story structure. Here are some both satellite views and street views of the site, primarily vacant with one small, single-story masonry warehouse. Insignificant building that will be demolished. And then our site plan here showing uh the the location of um trash room as well as building circulation. And then uh a modest retail space that we have on the frontage of Johnston and the corner of Whiten Street. And this is our proposed plan that you see here with a multipurpose room added behind the stairwell. Now, to to go through our um variances, and I just need to look at some notes here. One second, please. There we go. Yes, uh, so I want to, uh, there there's been one minor change. Which is the request of an additional sea variance that Cameron uh knows about. We got him this uh this information. And that's with building height. So there was upon initial submission, always a deviation for off-street parking. And the the reason why is because the Lafayette Park Redevelopment Plan really speaks to parking being required in two-bedroom dwelling units and more. There aren't many parking variances because many of the buildings brought before this board actually have. Smaller units, studios and one bedrooms. Uh, this developer is committed to actually doing two-bedroom, a two-bedroom product. So we have um majority two bedrooms in here, and I'll go through that briefly. Uh, but as such, we do, uh, we are asking for a parking deviation. We are proposing. Six standard, three compact and one ADA space for a total of ten parking spots when eighteen are required. And then we are asking for a modest increase, about ten percent for maximum building coverage. This is an L-shaped lot. And um as such, kind of interesting in terms of its organization, seventy-five percent is required. We are asking for a proposed deviation of about ten percent to eighty-five point seven percent. And I believe that can be justified with the fact that this is a corner lot, corner lots, um, you know, to be, don't, they have two frontages. As opposed to one frontage and a rear yard. And I think um this is fairly typical for not only projects we've proposed before this board before. But also um corner, corner buildings in general. Um, I'm going to skip ahead to the affordable bonus. Uh, we are taking advantage of that. Fifteen percent of the bedrooms or five units. Are deemed affordable, uh, and that has been worked through um by uh both Ben and and. Charles Harrington in terms of negotiations with the city. And so I want to direct the board's attention to the um blue item, which is the maximum permitted building height. What's required is sixty stories. Excuse me, six stories and sixty feet. Um, we were compliant on initial submission, but in looking at this. Uh, it's a six-story building will most likely be constructed four over two, two non-combustible floors, four stories of wood above. And frankly, it is nearly impossible to get a floor assembly that would be um. Small enough about a foot in a building of this size to actually um conform to the um the permitted building height. So um with that, I I thought, why bother showing a a building to this board that is sixty feet? Only to come back for an amendment later because we're going to need an extra thirty inches in terms of making our floor assemblies work. So we thought it best to um submit this as a a sea variance, a deviation for height, which is under. The uh the ten percent that is allowed, we're asking for a two feet, six inches. And all that's doing is redistributing the building section so that we have um slightly deeper floor assemblies. Which are going to be necessary for a building here. So I think that that's a hopefully a a deviation that can be justified by that logic. Now, in terms of a difference between initial and current submission, just in case the board is, um, you know, I I want to be very clear about this. Always been six stories and a roof. Uh, in the current submission, we've added a cellar that's been shared with Cameron. Uh, always been thirty-five units total. Uh, and you see um here in the initial submission, we actually had. Uh, thirty-five two bedrooms, one hundred percent two-bedroom product. I talked about this developer, this client being committed to to bringing. Larger units to market as a product. Uh, we've been able to.
Mr. Garber, you froze.
But it wasn't me. I thought it was just me.
Not just you.
Okay.
Mr. Nadell, can you, are you there?
I am. I'm trying to communicate with Mr. Garber.
Perfect.
No luck.
Mr. Nadell, perhaps if it's going to take a while, we can move on to your next presenter.
Hi, I'm sorry. I think I'm back.
Oh, okay, perfect.
I apologize for that. Full disclosure, I I am I I am, I am, I just finished teaching a real estate development course for architects at at the university I teach at, and I'm still in the classroom, and somehow I just dropped. So apologies for that. As a matter of fact, there are a couple of students still lingering around. Let me, let me go back to this. Can everyone can, I just think I have to reshare my screen. One second, please. I'm sorry about that. Okay. Okay, can everyone see? Hopefully that won't happen again.
Yes, we're we're back on.
Okay, great. Sorry again about that. So so briefly, I'm just going to concentrate on the current submission. We were, we're now proposing thirty four two bedrooms, one three bedroom, the parking spaces I talked about already. We did already, I already talked about the five affordable units. We have a modest retail space, hundred and fifty three square feet. And then our amenity package includes bike storage, which is required by the LDO, the package room, cold storage, and a modest multipurpose space of three hundred and thirty eight square feet. So advance to the next slide, design key points. The cellar has been added since the initial submission. It just frees up additional space on the ground floor for building amenities. Again, unit count thirty five, parking ten, affordable units are five. That includes one three bedroom and four two bedroom units. In accordance with affordable housing requests. Eight hundred and fifty three square feet retail space. The building height has been raised to sixty two feet, six inches. Trash room located to cellar elevator obviously remains. And then one thing that's interesting, we're going to show a very cool burial ground map that Cameron brought to our attention, which we are using as a graphic in the lobby. And in terms of the building massing, the the fifth and sixth floors have been set back. So we're holding a four story street wall on Johnston Avenue. This is our basement plan, so you see mostly utility spaces. And the trash room, which trashes, there's a compactor, trash is carried out through the elevator. The ground floor plan, I showed you the site plan already, and you see that we have mechanical room, like an electrical room. This has been actually relocated. So we now have a multipurpose room in the rear as shown here, which is our current submission. Retail stays the same. And then this is the graphic that we are adding, that that the planning office has brought to our attention. We think it's great, and it will be on our our elevator space here, this wall. And so I think everyone sees that. Can everyone see where I'm pointing with the mouse?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're we're excited about that, actually. In terms of our building footprint, this is a a more or less a double loaded corridor in terms of how our units layout with some front with a bit more frontage on Johnston Avenue. The units coated in the gray shade are the designated affordable units. So this is a two bedroom affordable unit here. This is a two bedroom unit here. And then as we move up. This is a a three bedroom unit here with a small third bedroom here, which we we think is great in terms of this this rear leg of the building. Our stairstairwells you see connect as 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 you see in the hallway, the trash room is located near the elevator and stair B on every floor. And these basically stack. And so you see again, we're color coding with the gray, mixing the affordable units within each of the floors. So we have one affordable, at least one affordable on every floor. We are proposing a roof deck as well as an extensive modular green roof for the roof of this building. There will be some mechanical screening as shown. And then the elevation. So the elevation, we have the, this should not say approved. This was initial submission. And then current submission, and you can't even see the difference, right? I'm switching between them. The building just gets a little bit taller. And that's because we're adding a little bit more square footage to the, sorry, space depth to the floor assembly. The the floor to ceiling heights in the building are maintained as is, which are nine feet on all the upper floors. Again, initial submission and current submission and on the sides, initial and current. On the north, initial and current. So the windows actually on this side changed a little bit. We're using casement windows here. Signage details, you see the retail signage, we're aligning the top of it to our glazing. And then you see a typical window detail where we're imagining screening for P tech units as well as what you see here, a series of fixed glass encasement windows. So there's no internal mullions to our glass. We want there to be large vision glass opportunities in the building. And then in terms of solar studies, these are going to just self play. There really is no qualitative difference that's discernible in terms of that thirty inches is the point here. This is a little bit of a taller building in an area that's approved for these this height of building, right? So this is casting some shadow within the street, and you can see as I flip through these, the the winter is going to be the more extreme urban buildings cast shadows, and that's what's happening. And as the board knows, this this area is developing quite rapidly. There are immediately to the east of us, some taller structures that are already completed. And I'll just continue playing these as we go through in terms of the summer, which is going to be the shortest shadow casting. This is from looking north from Whiten Street. And again, the point here is I don't believe that there's any significant impact from the shadow casting. You know, the building is following a logical pattern. Most of the shadow is being cast in the streets. There is some projection on to adjacent properties, including across the street at three forty two Johnson. And as I can testify, which I will shortly, we don't have a problem with this building casting some shadow on our lot. And then finally, just some axonometric views of the building. We do have as a way of modulating the fact that this is a taller building in the on the immediate block. Again, the entire block is permitted at six stories, and I suspect that will go. But what we're doing is adding a diagonal component in here of brick to to be offset from a panel. And what that's doing is it's modulating the height from a four story street wall that you see on the corner up to six stories. And we follow that around the side as well. So the building, because it has some more frontage on Whiten Street is responding to two scales. One is the more residential scale of some of the existing structure. And one is the scale of the larger buildings that are permitted by both the Lafayette Park and Morris Canal redevelopment plan, which is right adjacent to it. We think this is a good project and hope the board will agree with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber.
I'm sorry I dropped out.
Nope, it's okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Garber? Any commissioners questions? Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
Great, so I'll stop my screen share.
Our next witness, if the, or we have our civil engineer, Mark Shisvet, present this evening. The board would like to hear a testimony from engineering side of things. Otherwise, we can move forward to our planning testimony.
Does anyone want to hear from Mr. Shisvet? I think I'm okay with not a testimony from him, but anyone else?
Mine as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. Okay, yeah, we'll move on, Mr. Nadell.
Okay, and Mark is here with us for the rest of the evening in case any issues come up. With that, I'd like to call our professional planner, Catherine Gregory.
Gregory, do you swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth stuff you got?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name, spoil your last, and your address, please.
Catherine K A T H R Y N, last name Gregory, G R E G O R Y. My business address is ninety six Linwood Plaza, number three fifty in Fort Lee, New Jersey.
Thank you. The witness is sworn.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. I don't, I think you presented here before, right?
Yes, I have.
Yes, we have seen you before. Okay, just before we qualify you, is your license current?
Yes, it is.
And in good standing?
Yes.
Okay, you're qualified.
Ben, would you just like me to proceed?
Mr. Nadell is muted, okay.
Sorry about that. So Catherine, you're you're familiar with tonight's hearing. You've had an opportunity to review the site plan application, the redevelopment plan, the applicable zoning.
That is correct.
Great. So can you please give the board an overview from a professional planning standpoint of the proposed project? And also an overview of the variance relief that we're seeking this evening?
Certainly. It's always great to follow Mr. Garber because he does such a good job that he makes my job really easy. Mr. Garber's talked about our site and the proposed development in the context of the Lafayette, excuse me, Lafayette Park redevelopment area plan. And with that, we need a couple of variances associated with this project. And a lot of them seem to be because of the actual shape of the property. Also, the width of the property, it happens to have a very narrow piece over on Johnson. It's only fifty feet wide. I mean, it's also a corner lot. So there's some unique characteristics about this property that I think do warrant the variances that we're seeking. And so in that case, when we talk about the bulk variances, there's the two types. We have the C one and the C two. The C one, it has to do with an exceptional situation on a property. And then the C two is where the purposes of zoning would be advanced and the benefits outweigh the detriments. I think that all of our variances would be categorized into both the C one and the C two, actually. With that said, Mr. Garber talked about the building height. Sixty feet is required and sixty two and a half feet is being proposed. And he talked about the type of structure that is necessary to build a building of this type. So it's not as though we're just asking for something because we want it. It's really a process of the function of the building in terms of the structure. It has to do with that structural assembly. So we think that that is absolutely warranted, particularly with regard to the fact that Mr. Garber also showed you the shadow studies, and there's really no discernible difference between a building that sixty feet height. Sixty feet in height, excuse me, or sixty two and a half feet in height. In terms of building coverage, seventy five percent is permitted, eighty five point seven percent is proposed. Mr. Garber also talked about the fact that we have a corner lot, and this does seem to be very typical. The redevelopment plan doesn't specifically contemplate corner lots. And just as well, when I talked a little bit before about the fact that on Johnston, we only have fifty feet of the of the frontage. As you can tell, when you look at the parking inside the building, we're trying to maximize the parking, which is our next variance. But in order to do that, we don't have a typical loaded, a double loaded corridor where we'd be parking on either side because we only have a fifty foot wide lot. So Mr. Garber obviously got pretty ingenious in the way that he tried to lay out as many parking spaces as he could functionally on this piece of property. So again, I do believe that the building coverage, building coverage variance is warranted for those reasons. And lastly, we need a variance for the number of parking spaces. Eighteen is required and ten spaces is proposed. But we do believe that this is warranted for the fact that there are a number of New Jersey bus transit, bus New Jersey Transit Bus Lines, excuse me, in the vicinity of the neighborhood, which include the one, the sixth, and the eighty six. And so, and even in your planner's report, under staff comments. He stated that the redevelopment plan achieves the stated objectives of the Jersey City Master Plan by locating high density development in close proximity to mass transit facilities with the low parking ratios. So we think that the parking variance is also warranted. In terms of the positive and the negative criteria, I think in terms of the positive criteria, we we meet a couple of the purposes of municipal land use law. First and foremost would be purpose A, which talks about promotion of the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. And we are basically, according to the state plan, we are placing redevelopment in an area with existing infrastructure. That's one of the goals of the state plan. So therefore, we do advance the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. I also believe that we promote purpose E, which talks about promoting, excuse me, appropriate population densities, which we are doing here. And I believe that we are promoting purpose I, which talks about desirable visual environment. I think that you would say that compared to what was there formerly, even though the site is vacant now, and looking at what Mr. Garber's proposed in terms of an architectural piece, I think that it would be venture to say it's very attractive and will definitely enhance the area. In terms of the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good by granting the variances that were proposed. We believe that those variances actually make this development a better building, and we don't see any negative impacts to the public good. And in terms of no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of your zone plan and zoning ordinance. We do promote several of the goals of the redevelopment plan. One would be purpose B, provide for a variety of residential uses and housing types for both existing residents and prospective occupants in order to meet the housing needs of low, moderate, and upper income households. And we're doing that here because we are providing affordable housing on site as well as market rate units. We also are promoting purpose L, which is creation of new employment, housing, educational, recreational, commercial, and retail opportunities for the residents of Jersey City. We're doing that because we are providing retail on site. And also reduce automobile dependency by encouraging high density development in close proximity to mass transit, as I discussed before. That was quoted in your planner's report. We are providing bike parking spaces as well. And we are close to the Bergen Hudson Bergen light rail. So I believe that we meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the variances that we're granting this evening. We hope board sees fit to grant such variances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Any questions for Ms. Gregory, commissioners, anyone? Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you, Catherine. So we also have Craig Aragoy, our traffic engineer, present this evening. Should the board like to hear any traffic testimony? I'll defer to the board if they would like Craig to provide an overview.
I'll defer to the to board myself. Commissioners, anyone? Anyone want to hear from?
No. I think it's already too far into Johnson Avenue for that.
Okay, Ms. Mr. Nadell, they've spoken. I don't think we need him either.
Very well. So with that, that that would conclude our direct testimony.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead at this time and open this up for for the public. Does anyone in the public have a question, comment about this case P two zero dash one four zero at three forty one Johnston Ave? You can raise your hand online star nine on the phone. Anyone from the public?
Chair, seeing normal public, would like to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, commissioners. The public is now closed. So I think this is Mr. Secretary Black.
Okay, all right. So first, I'm just going to ask that Mr. Nadell agree to the conditions stated in the planning staff report dated September twentieth in the year twenty twenty one?
Yes, we've reviewed those conditions and we can comply.
Okay, great. Yeah, there's just some stipulation on the level of affordability for those five in that report, which is very important for the resolution the affordable housing. Yeah, planning staff is satisfied with the testimony given by their professional planner in regards to the C variances here. You know, we we believe this is furthering the objectives and goals of the redevelopment plan. And those variances will not have a hindrance on achieving those goals. And it was mentioned earlier in Mr. Garber's testimony, but there is a, you know, nice gesture to play off of some of the history of this neighborhood. If you've been to the area and walked around Dr. Lena Edwards Park, there are signs that the neighborhood have erected there to commemorate what is believed to be the site of a former African burial ground in the neighborhood. So there's going to be a historic map in that lobby that will be able to, you know, pique the curiosity of residents. And hopefully, they can learn something about the neighborhood and some history. So with that, planning staff recommends approval with the conditions.
Thank you, Secretary Black.
Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash one four zero with conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We'll have a roll call.
All right, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair Takor.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye. Good, good project. Thank you. Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Nadell. Okay. Iris, how are we doing?
I am still doing well, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. We'll move on then. Case P two one dash zero six nine is a preliminary and final major site plan amendment with C variances. And that is three forty-two Johnson Ave. We have Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening. It's actually Joseph Cow.
I'm Mr. Carter. How are you?
Good.
Good, thank you.
Yes, this application is for an amendment, and the applicant is three forty-two Johnston Equities LLC. And it is the designated redeveloper of three forty-two Johnston Avenue, which is within the Lafayette Park redevelopment area. Just as this is a notice application, I would just like to confirm the board's jurisdiction with council. We serve notices on, I believe, September eighteenth. And I forward the affidavit to council and to Mr. Black.
Mr. Alampi, you are muted.
That's what the problem is. Mr. Chairman, I am receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. All does appear to be in order, so we can mark that as A one for the record.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. So now, by way of history, just in November of twenty nineteen, under case P nineteen dash one two six, as board approves the construction of an eight-story mixed-use building on three forty-two Johnston Avenue, which was fifty-five units above a ground-floor retail space. Nine of the units were affordable housing, and there were thirteen parking spaces. The application had a height variance of six feet, and it took advantage of a height bonus allowed because it included a four-hundred-square-foot resiliency space for community use during an emergency. We actually have the same team of professionals as the application across the street, three forty-one Johnston. Present is Richard Garber of Grow Architects, professional planner Catherine Gregory, and engineer Mark Chisbet is present to testify and support the application. Believe Mr. Garber has a PowerPoint or presentation. And he'll be the first witness.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. So Garber, you're muted, just FYI.
Yep. Just want to make sure that you can see my screen.
Mr. Garber, just for the record, you remain under oath?
Yes.
And Mr. Garber, just for the record, your license is still current from like five minutes ago?
Has not, has not expired yet, Mr. Care.
All right, you're qualified.
Thank you. Thank you. Some of the board probably know. I've been living with this project for probably five years, if not more now. And this is the old U-Haul site at three forty-two Johnston. We've done a number of iterations to this project, leading up to, as Mr. Cowdah said, a successful resolution that was granted for an eight-story, fifty-five-unit building back on, I remember the hearing date specifically. It was right before Thanksgiving, November twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. That said, the world changed significantly some five or six months later. And the clients, as they've emerged now, as we all have, are looking at building this project. They'd like to start building this project fairly quickly and certainly within the next year, if not the next four to six months, if we can do it. However, their funding source actually came to them and said, units are too small. You need to raise the unit sizes. And this is indirect, this is a direct requirement that we're seeing from lenders for a number of mixed-use and residential projects. And ultimately, you know, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, when we were designing this building, there was definitely a move to downsize units somewhat. I won't call them micros. They're not micros. But at the same time, you know, this idea of living in the city meant being in the city, not as much in your space. And that has obviously changed somewhat. And so we were asked to take a look at this building and see what we can do. This is the exterior of the building, still remains. This is a rendering that we showed originally back in twenty nineteen. And see what we can do about increasing the size of each individual dwelling unit. And to do that, what we are asking for is a modest increase in the deviation already given on the rear corner setback. Now, if you remember from the last project, it was testified by Ms. Gregory that the corner lots are not specifically called out in the Lafayette Park redevelopment plan with any, any difference in terms of dealing with setbacks and so on than a mid-block site. And therefore, corner lots are frankly negotiated with the planning office. And this one is no different. That's what we did before, and that's why we're back now. This is the U-Haul site. You see it here on Johnson Avenue. So on the other side, so just to, so the board knows, our previous site was right here. And we are right across the street. So therefore, any shadow casting on our site is okay, as I said before. Lafayette Park redevelopment plan, you can see our, our corner status. This is a square-ish shaped lot, and I'll give you the building metric shortly. These photos are a little bit old. There's been some cleanup that has actually happened on the site, which is really great. So it's a little dug up now. If you, if you go through, there's some remediation happening. Right. And then our site plan also hasn't changed. The ground floor plan really has not changed at all. So the ground floor plan is the same floor plan that this board approved on November twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. Actually, with the exception of picking, with the exception of picking up parking space, which I'll talk about. But, but in general, we haven't decreased the, the commercial space, the resiliency space will still exist on the second floor, and the coverage is all the same. So you see our site plan with our, our various points of entry for vehicular on Whiten Street, and then various points of entry for pedestrians, both for the residential lobby, which is in the western corner of Johnston Avenue, and then three points of entry for the, the retail. And this is our proposed, proposed plan, which I'll go through a little bit. Now, in terms of the zoning tabulation, the approved variances were what was, what happened in twenty nineteen. A change from the approved resolution is in pink, and you'll see we did pick up one parking space, which is great. So we've gone from a parking requirement of twelve spaces. We had thirteen required. We were able, and doing some reconfiguration here, as the upstairs got reconfigured to squeeze in one more parking space completely legitimately. It works with circulation, so fourteen parking spaces. So we didn't need a variance there to begin with, and we're actually kind of creating a little bit of a better condition in terms of parking. Resiliency stays the same. And so really, the change is in the, what's called the minimum rear yard setback, which again, I will remind the board, is a rear corner setback that, that occurs here. We are decreasing the rear corner setback, and that'll be clear in the site plan, as you see. Now, in terms of the differences between the approved resolution and current, we are going to one studio and thirty-one bedrooms. And I'll, I'll explain how that works in terms of the, the site reconfiguration. But more or less, the units, the total unit count stays the same, and more or less, the unit mix stays the same. There is no change to the affordable unit mix. Affordable units that were designated in twenty nineteen remain today. Again, we picked up one parking space, gone from thirteen to fourteen on the ground floor, decreased the commercial space a little bit in doing so, and that's part of that reconfiguration. But I would, I would argue that it's not significant. It's about a hundred square feet, size of a bedroom. Our unit area has increased here, gross area to forty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-two square feet. So by changing this rear yard setback, we're picking up over the seven floors above the ground floor, about six thousand, little less than six thousand square feet or so. And our resiliency space remains at four hundred square feet. So you see that here. Additional design key points, the rear yard setback has been decreased on the second floor. I talked about that. The second floor roof terrace serves as an amenity space with outdoor grills, sinks, and as well, as well as removable furniture. There was an original swimming pool that is gone, that was, that, you know, is not an amenity that I think the client is willing to propose at this point. I don't think that decreases from the building at all. The roof space is used for mechanical space, and we have added a roof deck back. So that's another important point here. So, so that will change this. And actually, this is incorrect. We have two stairs and the elevator now reaching the roof. Transformer room remains. Resiliency space remains fifty-five units. And then you see here, if you look at the magenta column all the way to your right, you see the difference in increases in the units. And again, this was a direct request by the financial lender to build the building. They wanted to see bigger units. That's what we're doing. And all of this has been achieved by a modest decrease in the rear corner setback, requiring a modest increase in ask in terms of that deviation. But you can see that the, at a very minimum, units are going up about ten square feet. But more appropriately, as you look, they're going up more significantly. They're going up, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty square feet, a hundred square feet in some places, more than a hundred square feet in some places. And we think that this is really great. This is in direct response of, of COVID, where people are spending more time in their units and therefore need more living space. And again, we are not increasing the unit count at all, merely increasing the square footage as part of this amendment. As you see here, this is our approved resolution. I'll flip through this quickly. And our proposed resolutions, so this shows the additional parking space here. We have fourteen spaces. Our commercial square footage stays about the same, has the same points of entry, as well as our lobby. Again, approved, you'll see the resiliency space in red. You see the pool that's been kind of rethought in our proposed, which is a larger roof deck space. Our resiliency space remains. And again, being that this is a square-ish site, we have an L-shaped double-loaded corridor that serves these spaces. We have an amenity gym on the second floor that opens up onto that, that, that deck that we're proposing on the second floor. And as in the last application, the units shaded gray are the units that we have agreed to provide as affordable units here. Briefly, our resiliency plan, this has not changed. We have foldable beds and sofas, as well as outlets for charging phones in the event of emergency, potable water, emergency rations, as well as medical supplies. This, per the redevelopment plan, will be coordinated with the Office of OEM, the Office of Emergency Management. And we stated we have no problem doing that and look forward to doing that back in twenty nineteen, and our intention stays the same here. That, that resiliency space has, as I'm showing a before and after, because we have in effect lost three square feet. It's the same space, same size, but we've reconfigured because of these units, right? And then this is where you're really seeing the, the change here. So if you, you kind of focus on the rear yard here, the rear setback here, it's this area that we've encroached on a little bit. We've added more building space. So if I flip, you see that it gets a little bit smaller. And by getting smaller, we are able to bring up the square footage, you know, anywhere from on the small side, ten to twenty square feet, but largely fifty, sixty, seventy square feet, and in some instances, over a hundred square feet in these units, which is really great. We're expanding the living space, expanding the quality of, of interior space of these units, which is really, really important. Again, the, the gray unit, the gray units remain shaded. The fourth through sixth floor plan, this was approved. This was, is proposed. We've done a little bit more interior design work on these units as well. The two bedrooms have two baths now. That wasn't always the case before. In just about every instance, we're really happy with the way that these units have, have actually laid out in supplying more space. As you know, from the Lafayette Park redevelopment plan, the top floor is permitted at sixty-five percent coverage of the lower floor. So that has increased also, but that proportion has been maintained. And you see here, we are proposing roof decks for access on the seventh floor. So we're occupying the roof below. This is Whiten Street. This is Johnston Avenue here. Eighth floor stacks, and we are proposing some, sorry, excuse me, the, the seventh floor, sorry. And the eighth floor, as I show here, which we are proposing in here, as well as a roof plan. Now, it's very important here that we are maintaining a roof deck, and that's actually something that was submitted to Cameron. I think, I think I, I sent this to him last Monday, if I'm not mistaken, where we are taking advantage of a roof deck on the, the top of the eighth floor, which is something that initially was suggested as, as not doing. So I'm going to fast forward through here. These are our elevations, current submission. So you see, there's really no discernible change. We've just done a little bit more development work. Materials stay the same, and dark brick, as well as a series of panels built into a window assembly. And then the rear interior, so this, what you see here are a series of patios on the interior, which is great. And then finally, a series of before and after drawings of the, the building axons. And then I have some shadow studies that I've added in here. Again, there's been, there's really no discernible difference because the square footage of the building is really on the interior of the lot. This is not something that is really discernible from most vantagees of the street. And in terms of the shadow casting, there's a little bit more shadow casting to the interior of our lot, but nothing of consequence, in my opinion. All this is December twenty-first, which is the winter solstice, when the sun is lowest in the sky. And of course, we get most depth of shadow casting in those instances. And then briefly, commercial signage. This is all in compliance with the redevelopment plan. No change here in terms of the signage. We also have some signage on the resiliency space, which you see here on the second floor. And then just some details of how we're imagining our conditioned air slash window assembly with some fixed glass, some casement windows. And then an enlarged view of some of the decks that we're proposing as well. And then our final building. So we're, we're very excited about this. Again, I probably took everyone, I wanted to take everyone through the entire presentation, just because it's been, you know, almost two years. But again, what we're really seeking here is a, an increase in the total gross unit size. But again, what we're really seeking here is a an increase in the total gross unit sizes, not number of units. This is a request of the lender to allow the owner or developer to build this building. We think it's a great project. We think it's a gateway project to Liberty State Park on Johnston Avenue, and hope the board agrees with us that this amendment makes makes a whole lot of sense. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. I have Mark Chisbet here as engineer. Does the board with board like to hear his testimony? Or we could go right into planning?
Mr. Kada, let me just ask the commissioners, do you have any questions, Mr. Garber? Anyone? Any questions?
No.
Okay. And does the board want to hear from Mr. Chisbet? Anyone? Nope. Okay, Mr. Kada.
I thank you. Yes, can you promote Ms. Gregory?
Oh, yeah, she's on you.
Okay.
And Ms. Gregory, you have also been previously sworn in. Thank you.
You are still qualified. Your license is is okay still, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I agree. You testified in the initial application on November twenty-six, twenty nineteen, correct? Yes. So have you reviewed the amendment plans?
Yes, of course.
Could you good, can you provide your findings to the board?
Uh, yes. So here we are back amending our site plans. We're amending the C variances that are associated with the application. Again, Richard makes this really easy for me. I would venture to say that I I don't, I wouldn't say that we have a hardship in this case. I do think that these are going to be C two variances where the benefits outweigh the detriments. You know, he talks about the rear yard setback, and even in the last application across the street, we talked about the fact that the redevelopment plan doesn't really consider corner lots when it talks about the setbacks. And while we are diminishing the rear yard setbacks associated with this application, because we are making the units bigger, as you can see, there was really no discernible difference with the shadow studies with the proposed setbacks and what was actually approved. We we are reducing those somewhat, but we do believe that there's a lot of benefits that have come out of the building. Richard discussed those with you. You know, we still have the resiliency space, but we also have added a roof deck. We've added a parking space. So we think that this has actually made the project a better project. And like I said, I don't believe that there's any discernible difference with the shadow study or really an impact to the neighbors. Just the same with the building coverage, because we have those diminished setbacks, the seventy-five percent is what is permitted, and we were approved at the ground floor for a hundred percent. But in rearranging the project, redesigning, we're proposing eighty-five point seven percent on the ground floor. So we're actually reducing that. And on the upper floors, we're actually increasing what was there. But again, we believe that that's a good balance based on, you know, the benefits that we're getting out of this project to make it a better project. You know, Mr. Garber talked about the COVID and the fact that there now is a demand for larger units because people are working from home. And I know that while that won't last forever necessarily, I think that there's going to be a lot more flexible scheduling where people are going to work from home several days a week, because now they've gotten kind of used to that and not having to commute. So with that said, people do want more living space. And I think that's really across the board. I think that anyone who lived in a smaller apartment was probably wishing that they did have a lot smaller, a lot larger space while they were at home all the time, you know, working in front of their computer. So so I do believe that we meet the positive and negative criteria for the amendments to the application. Similar to the last application, we still promote purpose A, which talks about public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. You know, I but I did forget to mention the last application is that while not only re- redeveloping, you know, an area of existing infrastructure that goes to the state plan, but we are providing affordable housing. And that promotes a public purpose purpose as well. We are all promoting purpose E, which was the appropriate population densities. And also, most importantly, purpose I, which talks about desirable visual environment. We do believe that, you know, the changes to the application make this just as well a very good aesthetic. It will make it a positive aesthetic impact to the neighborhood. And I think that Richard said that he was looking at it as a gateway project to Liberty State Park, and I like that that reference. In terms of the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good, particularly, you know, by the reduction in the rear yard or in the the building coverage for the various reasons that I've already stated. We do believe that the project is going to be better. And similar to the last application, in terms of your zone plan and zoning ordinance, I do not believe there's any substantial impairment to your zone plan and zoning ordinance. And we also do promote purposes of redevelopment plan, including to provide for a variety of residential uses and housing types for both existing residents and prospective occupants in order to meet the housing needs of low, moderate, and upper-income households. Also, L to create new employment, housing, educational, recreational, commercial, and retail opportunities for the residents of Jersey City. And lastly, N, which talks about that reduction of automobile dependency. So I do believe we meet the positive and the negative criteria for the granting of the variances, amended variances associated with this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Any anyone from the the board want to ask a question of Ms. Gregory?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kada. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open this up for a public. This is for case P two one dash zero six nine. Anyone from the public, raise your hand. Or dial star nine. From your phone. Anyone from the public?
Being no public, I'm going to make a motion to close.
Okay, public is now closed. This is Mr. Black again, Secretary Black. Yep.
Hey, okay, um, so as per usual, I'm just gonna ask the applicant, agreed to the conditions stated in the planning staff report dated September twenty-fourth in the year twenty twenty-one. Are those conditions acceptable, Mr. Kada?
Yes, they are.
Okay, super. Um, this project is in conjunction with the JCRAs, we all know. So it's also subject to their review and their conditions. And, you know, we've been working closely with the applicant architect, JCRAs. And we've reviewed this project and believe that the bump out in the rear to accommodate larger units does not have a significant negative impact on air light or space, nor will it impact the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan in a negative way. You know, the addition of a parking space is always welcomed, as I'm sure we can all understand. And in general, the project is got a more tasteful finish to it, which Mr. Garber added some nice architectural features with. And overall, planning staff is happy with the project and recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash zero six nine with staff recommendations.
Motion made and seconded.
All right, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Dr. Desai.
I.
Commissioner Gangadin.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Horton. Commissioner Horton.
Sorry, I thought you said Ford, my bad.
Okay, Commissioner Torres.
Once again, this project, just coming back, but I know there's a lot of moving parts in a project to get it developed. But from being an Exxon station, then to be in a Grand Auto, and then also a U-Haul truck rental, it was also an ice water Johnson Avenue. The architect put it tightly, but he says that it's the gateway into Liberty Park. When you're going north, coming from my house to work in the morning, it is also the gateway into Jersey City. This is the last thing I see, abandoned properties. And I'm so glad that B forty-two now, B forty-one. And the one way across on the light rail has been developed on that is starting to look like a community. We built the back of the projects, the redevelopment area. And we're missing out on the front of it at the end. Not gonna be complete to this building. Before the two gets done, when you come into Jersey City or you leave north or south, you're gonna see the beauty of Jersey City. Realizes that and gets these projects spotted. I'm gonna vote a big eye on this. I'm always a fan of this project because it is the last thing I'm gonna see when I enter into Jersey City, from Liberty. Thank you.
So that's an eye for you, you said, right?
Yes, I did.
Perfect. I echo Commissioner Torres' sentiment on this item, on this application. I I think he he nailed it on the head when he says that. I I think it's great to see these things happening, and, you know, we did. I I remember that we had approved it, and then nothing was going on. And so I kept wondering what was going on. So I'm glad that you guys brought it back up and and modified it in a way that I think is is really good. And so I a big eye, bigger eye than Commissioner Torres, so I would.
Okay, and and actually, lastly, we've got Vice Chair Taccor.
Oh, I got a big eye too.
That's all in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. I think this is a perfect time to take a ten-minute break, Iris. Is that okay?
Yes, please. Thank you. That'd be appreciated.
Eight, nine minutes, somewhere around there. Seven twenty, we can come back. Everyone good with that? All right, we'll see you guys in a bit. All right, guys, I think we we can reconvene here if everyone's around. Oh, Tanya, Director Marion, how are you?
So good, how are you?
Good. Did we uh, do we need to swear you in?
Am I speaking on the record?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, are you?
So Tanya, if you do speak on the record.
Make it official.
Let's make it official. Tanya, do you swear that the testimony you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Tanya, great to see you, like always, you know that.
I mean, I don't even look tired no more these days.
Yeah, she's relaxed.
Very relaxed.
Perfect, so I will go ahead and call the next case up. It's K uh number thirteen on our agenda. Case P two-one dash zero six-three, this is uh for a two-year extension. Preliminary and final major site plan with C variances, the address is one fifty-five Newark Ave. Uh, and I believe we have Mr. Harrington. There he is.
Hello.
So Harrington, just before we do this, I just wanted to comment on K uh number fourteen, the case that we initially had carried. Uh, I'm being told that that's back on.
Yes, that was, we did not, we carried it from the last meeting to this meeting, but we did not make any request to carry it from this meeting.
Okay, so um, yeah, I've already called the other case, so let's finish that and then we'll we'll go forward, okay?
Yeah, this this will be quick.
Um, and and actually, if you don't mind me butting in real quick, just some secretarial duties. We do have an even number of commissioners now. We have eight commissioners and to keep it clean, we really should only have seven members voting. So that would mean one of our alternates should just, you know, they can obviously stay on, but they'll they'll not be voting. And an alternate would be either Commissioner Horton or Commissioner Dr. Desai, so.
Okay, I I will, I will leave anyway.
Okay.
Our Commissioner Dr. Desai, thank you. We always love having you, you know that, you're.
Yeah, okay, bye-bye.
Enjoy the night.
Enjoy the night.
The same.
Didn't even give Commissioner Horton the opportunity.
I know.
Glad to say.
He might wanna leave. Okay, uh, Council Harrington, you're on.
Okay, thank you. So for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is a request for a two-year extension of the approvals for this project. I did provide public notices uh for the request. I'm not sure if I was required to, but I did uh to to err on the side of caution.
And Council, I reviewed those notices because you provided them. I find that they appear to be in order, so Chairman, we can mark those as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, uh, Council.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, this this is an approval that that was approved by this board uh in March two thousand eighteen. Uh, it is for a six-story building with a penthouse with seventeen residential units and ground floor commercial. Uh, it's located in Newark Avenue Downtown Redevelopment Plan. And at that time, we we also were approved for a very nominal deviation or variance, if you will, for relief from the minimum required rooftop amenity open space. We had forty-four percent and and uh and we were required to have fifty percent. So what that means is when you get an approval uh with site plan with variances, uh, the approval is is valid for two years. So this this approval was valid from March uh twenty eighteen to March uh of twenty twenty. Uh, and within the last year, uh, my client, who is the property owner, she's not a a developer. She uh reached out to me in in March of this past year and advised me that she was working on her construction documents, but she was not aware that or did not recall that that the uh the approval uh was was valid through those two years. So what I'm asking for tonight is is an extension under the miniscolaneous law for a a two-year extension, which you can, you can apply retroactively. Uh, that would then take this approval uh through March of twenty twenty-two. And then that would um allow my client to proceed uh with the construction uh documents and the permitting uh for for the property. So I, and obviously, like all other projects during the pandemic, uh, things had stopped as well and and uh but but she is um has she is ready to to move forward, so we're are requesting the extension.
Okay, Mr. Harrington, thank you. Uh, anyone have any questions? Okay, that's all you had to say, right, Mr. Harrington?
That's it, yes.
Okay, uh, we'll open it up to the public, opening up uh case P two-one dash zero six-three. Uh, anyone from the public want to speak on this? You can raise your hand online or dial star nine if you're on the phone. Anyone from the public?
Mr. Chair, seeing no more public, would like to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second it.
Okay.
Public is, public is closed. And I uh believe we have uh Timothy, right?
Yep.
Mr. Crail, yep.
Uh, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair would like to make a motion to approve case P two-one dash zero six-three.
Motion is made, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion uh is now made a second, the roll call.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye. Aye.
Commissioner Horden.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangdon.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Taccor.
Aye.
And Acting Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
All favor, motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. So now, uh, I'm gonna call the next case is P two-one dash zero two-seven. Uh, this is um for preliminary and final major site plan with a C variance. Address two oh three Baldwin Avenue. And uh, Mr. Harrington, you're up again.
Yes, so again, uh, for the record, Charles Harrington of uh Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this also was a notice case, so I'd ask that they those be reviewed and marked into uh the record.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. I am received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application presented here this evening. All does appear to be in order, we can mark that as A1 for the record.
Thank you.
May one, okay.
Okay, so so the application before you tonight uh for for this uh property is uh for a six-story multifamily building uh with a total of eleven residential units. The property is located in Zone four A of the Journal Square twenty-sixty redevelopment plan and it fronts on Baldwin Avenue. Uh, and then you'll see during the presentation, it's uh close to the path cut as you travel north on Baldwin Avenue. So we are uh requesting uh one deviation in connection with the property uh with the project, and that would be for the rear yard setback. So uh we will, you know, it's, we're proposing a twelve-foot setback, uh, I believe thirty feet is is the requirement. Uh, other than that, it is, it is compliant. Um. With that said, I have uh, I have a number of witnesses here, but I'm, I plan on only presenting uh Mr. Garber, our architect, and uh Mr. Bellamy is our planner. But for the record, I do have our civil engineer available for any questions from the board, or if they would like to hear from him, Tom Quinn. Uh, and also our traffic engineer, uh, Mr. Valari is here. Uh, I note that we don't have any parking uh in connection with this property uh or in project and none is required, but we did provide a traffic report uh as required by the local ordinance. So uh, with that said, um, it's uh Mr. Garber's night tonight, so we'll bring him back up.
If he hasn't lost his license, Mr. Sir.
I hope it hasn't expired.
And Mr. Garber, you have previously been sworn in. You may interrupt.
And you've been, and you've been qualified, Mr. Garber. You're a man, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, uh, so two oh three Baldwin is a is an interesting project for us in that um, I think from a the 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 important takeaway here, at least for me, as we've designed this project, is it represents an important typology, an important type of building that can now be considered, not only in Journal Square because of the progressive nature of density in Journal Square, but also because of a change to the twenty eighteen building code. Uh, the NJIBC that reintroduces um an architectural feature that um formerly was called a scissor stair. I'm not gonna use that term again. Uh, what we're talking about is a helical double stair that wraps around one another. Um, that is a a very important um addition to the code um that allows for um better configuration of twenty-five wide lots that require two stairs. Now, what are lots that require two stairs, any lot over four stories? And so what this does is it introduces a solution for typologies, residential or mixed-use typologies that are taller, I won't say like super tall or anything, taller buildings. And that's what we have here, we have a six-story building, eleven units. Uh, this is our rendering, we are a little bit more contextual with the facade treatment on this one. Um, and uh, and I'll show you a little bit about the uh the interior organization of it in a second. So to begin, you see the site, uh, as Chuck said, it's right near the path, the slot, if you will, of the path. And this is very much Journal Square. However, this building and this orientation on Baldwin Ave is really facing down the hill. Uh, really facing down um, you know, uh, the Palisade to downtown uh Jersey City. And as such, um, I think a taller building is warranted because of the views. Now, the the height in this zone is actually set by the street width, and that's what we're doing. We're basically matching the street width, which is getting us our six stories. Uh, the existing condition is a fairly nondescript um yellow vinyl clad house, uh, not significant. You see um Journal Squared being constructed in the back, that that you you can't really see the building as you see now because there is a six-story building that has been built next to it, um, that I think the board has seen a number of times uh right at the corner there. Uh, so we are right next to that building at two oh five, this is two oh three Baldwin Avenue. And again, another view of the um, the structure, and and this view will be um concealed uh by the building that's now been constructed there. This is a little bit of an older slide, and only the the first floor above grade is constructed, more street views here. And you get a sense of the context, and with that context, why we're uh proposing here a brick, uh, sort of a contemporary building in terms of big windows and so on, but matching the context with a um almost like a checkered kind of light-colored brick that matches that yellow brick that is so prominent on Baldwin Avenue at this point. Now, the site plan I will be talking about uh quite a lot, but as uh Chuck had mentioned, we are asking for a deviation for the rear yard setback. I don't think that that is a um, an inappropriate ask, given the amount of coverage that exists elsewhere, and all you have to do is refer to the masonry garage directly to the south of us, uh, which is an accessory structure for the two-story frame dwelling that almost makes uh about nine, over ninety percent coverage of the adjacent lot. Here, we are asking for a twelve-foot setback for what is a private rear yard, and that will allow us to do one dwelling unit on the ground floor. This is organized two dwelling units back-to-back, or ten units on the upper floors. One unit on the ground floor gets us to eleven units. Now, I talked about that deviation here, it is on our zoning tabulation chart, thirty feet is required. Um, in this subzone, uh, we are requesting a uh uh a deviation so that we are, we have a twelve-foot rear yard. I think that's appropriate in terms of uh light and air, and I'll show that with a shadow study uh later in the presentation. All else is in compliance. In terms of design key points, our lot size is just under the standard twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, our proposed total building, eleven thousand one hundred eighty-five square feet. Again, this is a six-story tall typology for um a um a typically sized lot. And again, this is slightly smaller than the typically sized twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, this is in four A of Journal Square, six stories, sixty feet, eleven residential units, broken down as eight two-bedrooms and three one-bedrooms. An elevator is proposed, uh, as well as our helix stair, which I will show you in a second. First floor has that two-bedroom unit in the rear with that rear yard I spoke about. There's also a residential lobby, bike storage, utilities, trash room, uh, and mailboxes. Um, bike storage is proposed with thirteen bike spaces, so we're at a little bit better than than need be. No parking is required here in four A of Journal Square. Um, five hundred and seventy-one square foot common roof deck is proposed. Uh, three-foot setback proposed at the front yard of Baldwin Avenue, and I'll show that in the ground floor plan in a second. Um, as well as three-foot side yard, given that that building to our immediate south, uh, which has a lot of coverage I was talking about before, has some non-conforming lot line windows that we need to set back because of. Um, and I talked about the rear yard already. So here you see in our refuse and bike storage plan, we do have a bike storage room that's right up front off the lobby. Our elevator is back here, and then we have these side yard windows, more or less right on the lot line in this kind of bay window type projection in the existing building. So we are setting back the required uh three feet from that, which is dictated by building code. And then you see here our double helix stair, formerly called a scissor stair. I said I was not gonna use that term again, um, which allows for um egress as imagined. Um, we are proposing a modest basement, uh, and that's for a sprinkler room. There is an existing basement in the house that exists here, something like this configuration. We have not been able to confirm that because we have not been able to get into that house, but it's something like this. And that basement, uh, or it may even be a cellar, uh, will be only for our sprinkler pump room, just bringing in the service under the sidewalk where it exists anyway. Um, our ground floor plan, as you see here. Our ground floor plan, as you see here, proposed first floor, we have our double helix stair. And what happens here is you have two straight runs that basically wrap one another like this, like a big X. And what that does is it means there's no corridor space, right? The separation is through a door on one side and a door on the other. So these are two separate firebroken stairs. We've had a lot of discussions about this when this was initiated back in the code in 2018. The city adopted the 2018 code about a year and a half ago, I think. Had a conversation with Mr. Meyer in the construction office, as well as Mr. Ward in the planning office about this. As a matter of fact, Mr. Ward brought it to my attention when it first happened. Thanks, Matt. And. It is, it is something that we're we're utilizing here. And again, I think it's important for this typology that we're proposing here. So two-bedroom unit on the ground floor, you see a small bedroom here as well as one bedroom in the rear. And then our kind of kitchen dining, living situation happening on the north edge of the site with rear openings here. Excuse me. Second and third floor plan stack, we're doing two two-bedroom units in the front and back. And again, that two-bedroom unit, which we think is a really important feature in the rear. Is frankly possible because of the relief that we're asking for in in terms of that rear yard setback. A two-bedroom configuration wouldn't be possible. We do really like when clients come to us wanting to do larger units. We think that that is against the grain, frankly. There's, there's many of the projects we do, as this board knows, involve smaller or smallish units. Here we have a primary two-bedroom. Configuration with eight of the 11 units being two bedrooms laying out as you see here. And you see access to stair A and B in our helical stair configuration. Fourth floor plan, you see there's a bit of a change in that we're stepping back on the fourth floor to make some private balcony space in the front of the building here. And that setback is, I want to say it's about. Five feet with our parapet, which I think is a nice clean dimension. It's a little shorter than that in terms of when you take out the parapet, but it's good usable outdoor space, something that's very important as the city densifies. And then our sixth floor plan stacks again like that. So this is just setback. There is not outdoor space in the front on the sixth floor. It's just taking advantage of that setback. And that's where we have a one-bedroom, a nice large one-bedroom unit here with a large bedroom fronting Baldwin. As well as our kitchen, living, dining, and then two-bedroom in the back. And you see that our hallway stays the same. In terms of the roof, we're imagining that there will be some screened mechanical equipment in the rear of the building somewhere in there. This hasn't been sized yet. As well as a 571 square foot common roof deck, which is accessed by both stairs as well as the elevator. And a small, a modest elevator lobby that's 90 square feet, under 120 square feet. I'd like to get that on the record, just to make sure that it's understood. It's a lobby. It's not a dwelling unit or anything like that, but it is enclosed space. We need to get the warranty for that elevator. In terms of the building, again, we're excited about this. This is a taller lean typology. And that's because of that double helix stair that we have here. I talked a little bit about the brick that we're deploying on this. We have the front and rear elevations here. So you see that setback here, which is why some of these windows are hidden from view. I'll show that again in the. In the perspective that I'll finish with, we are using some stucco for the the penthouses for the stairs and so on. Which are not really going to be seen from the street. Now, in terms of the sides, we do have some side yard windows where we have that setback. These are all in conformance with building code to the south. The north is just a closed-off condition against the the building at 205. It basically shares a line wall. And then I just want to put this up just in terms of the character of the street heights, buildings of various heights. There is a basement occupancy in this building, which is at, I think that that would be 20, sorry, 197, 199, I think Baldwin Avenue. This is a little bit of a larger building with some ornamentation on the roof. We are largely matching this kind of context. So you see a lighter brick building here. A darker brick building here, which is a little bit smaller, as well as that lighter brick being picked up again elsewhere in the city. And so we are very excited about that. Here's some other instances of that in terms of a contextual. Argument that we're making for this facade of our tall and slender building due to the double helix stair. In terms of our shadow studies, I think shadow studies are important for this one. To just to kind of understand that the building is really filling in a gap. Of an allowable height here, right? So the building next to us, a 205 is a six-story building. We've just expressed it as a flat roof. There really is some penthouse up there as well. If I move to the next slide, you'll see what that means in terms of the street here. So this is our summer orientation when the building is really casting shadow en masse with the existing buildings that exist here. And again, it's a slow in June, a slow kind of crawl till the sun is lowest in the sky around 8 o'clock at night. And then finally, in winter, the same phenomenon is basically happening. A slow crawl in December where we are basically contributing en masse to the shadow casting that's already happening. I don't think that we are really worsening the condition in any significant way. And you see here, it's quite dark, as everyone knows, on December 21st. So there's a lot of shadow casting then, and we are just. Consistent with the rest of the block, I think it's fair to say. And finally, I'll end with our. Our, our building design, our rendered perspective. We think this is a sharp building. We have set it back so that the first three stories are maintaining the street wall. Responding to some of the lower buildings that still exist on Baldwin while maximizing our height to six stories on a slender lot. Because of that stair that's been reintroduced into the NJIBC as of the 2018 code. And we think, again, it's a, it's a really important typology to show how to get density on some of these narrower lots where the redevelopment plans permit that. So thank you.
Mr. Harrington, you are muted.
Thank you. Richard, as an administrative matter, this presentation is a little different from the formal submission, correct? I I think we should maybe mark it as A2.
Sure. And it, all we've done here is we've added shadow studies, which were a late, you know, we were doing shadow studies for the other ones we had tonight. So we thought we should do this. And so that, that's, that's, that's the new, the new content here, those animations. I'm happy to submit those.
All right, let's mark it as A2 and let's get it submitted.
Sure.
So as I mentioned earlier, I have my civil engineer here, Mr. Tom Quinn. In the event the board would like to hear from him or has any questions. And I also have a traffic engineer here as well. So I'll defer to the board if you want to hear or have any questions, or if you want me to move on to our planning testimony and and leave it open.
I'll defer to the board as well. I don't have any questions. I don't think I need Mr. Quinn or. Your other witness, anyone else want to hear from them?
I have a quick question, important.
Commissioner Horton, yep.
Yes, Mr. Garber, thank you for presenting tonight. You cited that the building next door, the lot next door has additional lot coverage as one of the reasons why the grade is to be granted. How many other buildings in the area have the same lot coverage? I know they are pretty well, and I recall lease timed at a row of houses, the other area does have a lot of backyards.
Yeah, so what, what, what I think is important here is if we show our site map. That this L-shaped lot is 205 Baldwin. That's 100% coverage now. And I think Sam, if I'm not mistaken, has an updated aerial that he can show. I just didn't have that in my slide. When you look at our site compared to the rest of the block immediately adjacent to us. Most these of these buildings are way beyond the, the permitted 30 feet. Either through their own footprint as a singular sort of larger or massive sort of object building. Or through the accessory structures, which we, we talked about. So, so I think we are consistent with. In terms of coverage, we're, we're fairly consistent with the existing conditions that we find. Both to our immediate north, which is that big site, a 205, as well as the existing condition buildings that that exist next to us. We have been sure, and I think this is why Mr. Harrington brought up that we have our civil engineer present. That the, the, the request for additional coverage does not. Preclude us from, from doing all the drainage and so on. I mean, the civil engineer can speak to that if you need to. But I do think, you know, just even looking from this, this, this view that I have here, these rear yards are largely. From the buildings at the terminus of Summit Avenue, which, which basically, you know, concludes here. On this site at 205 reaches around and is at the terminus of Summit Avenue. As a matter of fact, one of the ways to get into 205 is through the back here as well. So these rear yards all exist as a neat row, more or less linear row. From the units on the other side of our lot. Right? So as such, if you look, the building next to us has the coverage.
Rich, that's not Summit Avenue, that's Perrine Avenue.
I'm sorry, Perrine. Yeah, you know what? I said Summit and I was like, that's not Summit.
I just want to be clear for the board.
Yeah, that's sorry about that. Yeah, sorry about that Perrine Avenue. Yeah, sorry, that's a typo on our part. Summit is here. But you can see that the buildings immediately adjacent to us, this is the one I spoke about. This, this building that I showed as a kind of beautiful herb building that we're using for contextual insight. As well as the, the, the more narrow building next to it. All project back well beyond, you know, a 30-foot setback, which is, I think, more consistent with what you're getting over here. Which is, I think, if I'm not mistaken, this is like 193 or 195 Baldwin. So, so the, the, so the buildings immediately adjacent to us, which is 201. I assume this is 197 and 195 as well as 193. So this would be 191, excuse me. All, all have building depths that I think are consistent with what are proposed here.
I guess my follow-up question then is, it appears that part of the variance is because they abnormal lot size and it's what 92 and a half. Feedback. You're asking for 12 feet as opposed to seven and a half that you may be putting by that, correct?
We're asking for 12, right? So let me just put my site plan up. Sorry, hold on one second. And again, sorry about that mislabel for Summit Avenue. What we're showing here is 12 feet on the, from the rear lot line of our lot. So we are at 92.5. So our building is basically 80 deep. In, in terms of, in terms of the relief. So in terms of the actual ask, we're, you know, from a 100-foot lot. There'd be an additional seven and a half feet there, if that's your question. But we are an absolute dimension, not a relative dimension, 12 feet from the edge of our lot. This lot happens to be 92 and change deep. So that's right.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton. So does anyone from, any commissioners want to hear? Mr. Bellamy and Mr. Quinn?
No.
Okay.
No.
Well, I think we need to, we need to hear from Mr. Bellamy.
Oh, me, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Quinn, and who was your other?
John Corack is our traffic engineer.
I think we'll go, go ahead and move on to Mr. Bellamy then.
I wouldn't mind hearing from the traffic engineer if the board's okay with it.
You want to hear who, Commissioner?
Traffic engineer.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Harrington, can we call traffic engineer?
Yeah, you, he's not a panelist right now. If you could call him up, John Corack. John, if you raise your hand there so we can find you.
He's promoted.
Thank you, Secretary.
There we go. Do you have me now?
We can hear you.
Great.
Mr. Corack, please raise your right hand. Do you swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last and give me your address, please.
Certainly. The name is John Corack. Last name is spelled C-O-R-A-K. With Stonefield Engineering and Design, located at 92 Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Thank you. What is this word?
And Mr. Corack, could you please give the board the benefit of your professional educational experience?
Certainly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the College of New Jersey. I'm an expert in the field of traffic and transportation engineering. I have appeared before over 50 boards within the state of New Jersey as an expert and have prepared over 100 traffic studies for land development applications.
Jim, Mr. Corack, you are qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would open up to Commissioner Horton if you, you have questions or do you want us to? Do you want Mr. Corack to speak to? The traffic conditions here?
I prefer him to speak briefly about the traffic conditions and if I have any follow-up.
Yes, certainly. So from a, from a development perspective for this project, you know, fairly small development. As far as the total number of units, the amount of, of trips, so to speak, person trips generated to and from the site. And when traffic engineers typically do their studies, they're looking at how many cars are coming in and out. In this case, being, being in an area that is, has great proximity to transit, we're looking at people, the, the person movements, whether it's pedestrians, bicyclists. Or the occasional pickup or drop off from a vehicle. And in this case, with the proximity to Journal Square Transportation Center, with the proximity to a number of bus routes in the area. As well as the bicycle parking that's provided onsite, that the traffic impacts for this development are essentially negligible. On the, on the flip side of that, there is no parking required. There is no parking provided. This helps promote means of transportation that don't use automobiles. When, when the tenants don't own automobiles, don't park onsite. They are getting around Jersey City. They're getting to and from work, to and from their errands. Whatever needs that they have for traveling, they're doing those means, not through automobile, but through walking, through bike trips. You know, occasionally through, through an Uber, Lyft or taxi service. But overall reduces the vehicle ownership on the site and this development from a, from a traffic engineering perspective. Is a very small generator of traffic and I wouldn't anticipate any significant impact to the roadway network.
This is two quick follow-up questions. First off, even though that no park is required for here. Just because it's not required doesn't mean that residents wouldn't be permitted any on-street parking, correct? Applying for at least.
That's my understanding, correct?
Okay. Second one is, I believe going north of Baldwin, there's no sides returning egress. You really have, you know, one way in, one way out of that area. That goes, you know, by the courthouse and Magnolia and that area, which, you know, historically has very high congestion and traffic. Is there any studying and gun to see how it impact, you know, that congestion, especially during peak hours and area?
You know, at, at this low number of units for the site. An additional vehicle or two over the course of an hour during, during those peaks is not going to have any sort of substantial impact to that area. And, you know, given, given them some of those levels of congestion that we have seen out there. It's, it's very much conducive for residents of the site to, to walk, take transit. You know, to accomplish their transportation needs.
Theoretically, if every member of that unit had a car though, would it impact traffic in that area?
To be honest, the, the daily fluctuations of. You know, of traffic volumes, you know, we're looking at Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that, that those fluctuations are higher than. The traffic generated by this type of development over the course of an hour. So in, in, in all practicality, no, there wouldn't be any substantial impact. But also, you know, this is a theoretical condition and, and certainly not every unit here will, will own a vehicle or be parking on street or otherwise.
So you was correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Horton. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Corack. Appreciate it. We brought you in from the, from the outer world and. Mr. Harrington, I think we can call Mr. Bellamy if you'd like.
Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Bellamy. Sam up here?
Hi, yep.
Right there.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I see you on the screen. Oh, there we go. Do you swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
So state your full name, please, spell your last and your address.
Samuel Bellamy, last name B-E-L-L-A-M-Y. Our company address is 1 Evertrust Plaza, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you. What is this word?
And Mr. Bellamy has appeared and been qualified before this board and the zoning board many times.
I'd only ask if. I'd only ask if your license, Mr. Bellamy, is current.
Yes, current and in good standing.
Okay, perfect. You're qualified.
Thank you. So reiterating, this property is in zone four A, the community multifamily low rise of the Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment plan. We are asking just for the one deviation tonight for minimum rear yard setback. We are proposing twelve feet where thirty feet is required. So with this project, we are redeveloping the subject property with the new multifamily building that is consistent with the the Journal Square plan. The rear yard setback, as Mr. Garbert testified to, is consistent with buildings on Baldwin Avenue. I am going to share an updated aerial image just to demonstrate that.
We will mark this as A three.
Thank you, Captain.
Okay, so here you can see this is a snapshot of near map aerial imagery. This was taken August twelfth, two thousand twenty one. The property is identified here. I'm going around it with my cursor. To the north is two oh five Baldwin, which is a new six-story multifamily building. As you can see, that building does have, appears to be a hundred percent lot coverage, zero-foot rear yard setback on the ground floor, likely a five to seven-foot setback on the upper floors. To the south here, this is a two-unit building with a one-story accessory garage. Again, this is predominantly a full coverage of the lot here. Going south, continuing south, you have a multifamily building with the rear yard setback of approximately twelve feet. Further south, again, another rear yard setback approximately twelve feet. So just to distinguish, and you could see that the buildings that front onto Perrine Avenue do have a greater setback than the buildings that front on to Baldwin Avenue. And really, in the zone four A, the permitted building height is based on the right-of-way width. So on Baldwin Avenue, you have a sixty-foot right-of-way that permits buildings six stories, sixty feet. I'm going on to Perrine Avenue, it narrows down to it's a smaller side street, dead-end street. So the right-of-way width there is forty feet. So this is kind of a smaller building height for probably four stories, forty feet. So really, you do have two different typologies with buildings fronting on to Baldwin Avenue, distinguished from the buildings that front on to Perrine Avenue. So so moving further on that, with the consistency with the rear yard setback, the twelve feet that we're proposing, it's a little bit more pulled back than the building to the north. So likely, the shadows would fall predominantly on on to that building, that multifamily building to the north. And also, you you don't have any usable open space to the south here. So likely, your shadow impacts won't have any substantial detriment onto any open spaces. So Mr. Garber got into the the building typology. This is a a twenty-five-foot wide lot, which is your standard for this four A zone. It is a little shallower than the the standard one-hundred-foot deep lot, right about ninety-two and a half feet. So it is a little shallower. And this is a narrow lot for a multifamily building here. But what we're proposing, the eleven units, really is consistent with the Journal Square plan, trying to get a higher density in in this area that could access the the alternative means of transportation here. So with the building design, you do have units at front in on the front of the building and then on the rear of the building. And the the mix that we're proposing, I believe it's eight eight two-bedroom units and three one-bedroom units. Is it a little different of a mix than Journal Square? I think a lot of times you see smaller units that are squeezed into buildings. This building is a little bit longer with this rear yard deviation that we're asking for, which allows for a different building type that I think could attract other people in Journal Square while maintaining the density that's that's intended in this area. We are proposing eleven bicycle parking spaces. The requirement is six. So just speaking of the traffic, I I think the intent here is for people to use alternative means of transportation consistent with the Journal Square plan, use the Journal Square Pass Station, walk, bike, and really promote this 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 area as a central business district. All these units will be ADA accessible units, including the common roof deck. And then going further, we are proposing the four-foot step back on the upper three floors, floors four through six in the front. So as Mr. Garber testified to, what that does is it really mixes consistent with the six-story height, but also mixes in with the some of the lower buildings that are currently on on Baldwin Avenue. So really moves that street wall back a little bit and adds a little light and air on to the street and public right-of-way there. So moving into this project promoting the purposes of the municipal land use law, I I do believe that this granting of the deviation will guide the appropriate use and development of the property in a manner that will promote the general welfare. As stated, this is a a use that is permitted. It's actually the zone four A only permits residential uses. And I think this building is consistent in scale with the surrounding development, so that would advance purpose A. As stated, this is also a density that's intended for the Journal Square area. So this would also promote purpose E. And then Mr. Garber got into some of the the design elements, matching of the facades of the existing buildings with the the brick material. So I I do find this to be an appropriate infill development that will promote a desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I. Moving into the negative criteria, I think as I covered, there's no substantial detriment to the general welfare. I do think that the provided setbacks, the the three-foot side yard setback to the south, which allows air, light and air to the to the windows of that adjacent building, pulling back the front step back and the provided rear yard setback that is consistent with the other buildings that front on to Baldwin Avenue will allow for light air and open space. This building is will also be consistent with all fire and building codes. Likewise, I I do not believe there will be any substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Again, this is, you know, right in line with what the Journal Square redevelopment plan calls for, higher density that could access mass mass transit. And this building is consistent with all all other bulk standards, the height, side, front yard setbacks. This this project's also consistent with the master plan, providing for a mix of housing options. I I think with that, this project does meet both the positive and negative criteria. I think that concludes my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Bellamy, any questions from the board? Anyone?
No. No.
Okay.
Good chair. Chair, I have a quick question. I believe I I just want to confirm if I heard correctly that the lot size is to twenty-five by ninety-two and it's and it's narrow as well?
So the the minimum required lot width in for this zone is twenty-five feet. I I do think this is a narrow width for multifamily buildings. This is a permitted width. Again, the multifamily is a permitted use. But I think Mr. Garber covered some of the the design constraints of having a twenty-five-foot lot width. So I I think this building is consistent with that. Did that answer your question?
Then. Well, it's 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 more narrow as well as you're you're asking for a twelve-foot setback as well.
That's that's all we're asking for. The the lot width is is complies with the minimum lot width. And then the the lot depth is ninety-two and a half feet, so it's a little less than what would be typically a a hundred feet. But it is a conforming lot. All lots, all existing lots are conforming. So we're not asking for any any relief for for the lot dimensions or area.
And in regards to the presentation, is that subjective? That we that it will not be, it will be more of mass transit?
Well, I I don't think it's subjective. I think it's, you know, we have our our traffic expert. That's that's what he does. That's what he's qualified to do in his his experience. That's that's his professional opinion. And I do, you know, reiterate that the Journal Square plan does not require any parking. It 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 actually, you know, encourages that you do not have parking. So there there is no parking here and there, you know, the the unit count is only eleven units.
Well, Commissioner Gangit, and to answer the question of whether or not it's subjective, it's this board's decision whether or not to accept the testimony as presented. So you have an expert opining as to the parking, both you have an engineer testifying as to the parking, the traffic expert testifying as to the impact of traffic in the area. It's this board's authority to weigh that evidence and determine whether or not to accept that testimony or reject that testimony. And then, of course, as counsel indicated, ultimately, the board is guided by the plan, and if parking is not required, then parking is not required. So whether or not to accept the testimony of the expert, that's for the board to determine. You determine his credibility and whether or not you accept his his testimony. He is an expert in the field. He's been qualified as an expert. And his opinion is expert testimony to be weighed by the board.
And if I could just add, as as I said, there there's no parking requirement here. With the the only relief we're asking for is for the rear yard. So hypothetically, if you had a building that had the thirty-foot rear setback, it would be an as-of-right application with no parking, and you could still have eleven units because you could have smaller units because there's no density standard in in the Journal Square area or Journal Square redevelopment plan. So what we're part of it, and you know, my thought here is is with the relief we're requesting on top of what Richard said and Sam said is that it it creates an opportunity for for better units, bigger units on this lot. So, you know, you have eleven units with better layouts, better better for the building, better for for the area of the city, as opposed to trying to, you know, push in eleven eleven smaller units in a in a fully compliant building.
Gangit, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have two quick questions, or yes, acting chair. Do you know how much the price per square footage is in that area? And then my follow up question, that would be obviously, or or you have the more you can charge, correct?
Counsel, if you can answer that question as, you know, somebody with some knowledge in the the general area, I guess, but Mr. Horton, it's not really relevant to the consideration. The testimony from the applicant with respect to the relief sought was what it was, and it's up for the commissioners to determine whether or not that meets the standard. It does not matter. It's irrelevant what the price per square footage and or what the market will do. Obviously, it's something that the applicant has to be conscientious of, but that's not for this board to concern itself with. So even if that is true, it's not relevant to our determination of whether or not they've met the and satisfied the criteria for the rear yard setback variance being sought.
I think it's separate from the variance. I'm just curious generally for that area.
I I do not know that answer.
No problem. I appreciate it, counsel.
Any more questions? Mr. Harrington, that was the testimony?
Yes, that completes our presentation.
Mr. Quinn, thanks for being patient and joining us. I will now open this up to the public. If anyone from the public has anything to say about this application, application case number P two one dash zero two seven two oh three Baldwin Ave, opening up the public. If you are in the public, you can raise your hand in the internet or want to call in. It's a star, star nine. Anyone from the public?
Chairman, seeing no more public, would like to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second it.
Okay, the public is now closed. I believe we have Mr. Crehal.
Yeah. After hearing the concerns, the commissioners concerning traffic, dealing with the different groups in Journal Square and about vehicles in general, one more vehicle is usually too much for the load of parking in this area. But you have to understand that given John Corack's testimony, a lot of his testimonies based on IT standards and and traffic volumes that govern how how they put together their traffic reports and that the rear yard variance is not cannot really be tied to this. So whether or not it's they're separate completely. I mean, if it was an as-of-right application, it was an as-of-right application. If they asked for the rear yard variance, they asked for the rear yard variance, but not granting the rear yard variance does not change what traffic volumes might or might not be. So you have to keep that in mind when voting on this application. It's the rear yard setback. I totally understand the the concerns about traffic and parking. But as, you know, the IT standards say that there will be less vehicles given this type of development and that it is only eleven units. So leave it to the board to make your own informed decisions on this.
Mr. Crehal, that is it? That's all? Okay, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash zero two seven.
Second it. Okay, motion made and second it.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Gangit.
No.
What was that?
Commissioner Gangit, and you're not coming through clearly.
No. No.
I I heard a no, Commissioner Gangit, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Horton.
No.
Commissioner Allen.
Uh, it's a nice building for for such a small space. I I totally understand where Commissioner Horton is coming from and kind of understand why Commissioner Gangdon would vote no. I understand parking in Jersey City. Everybody has parking problems. Unfortunately, I'm going to vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
No.
Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Cor.
Hi.
And Acting Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi. I think you forgot Commissioner Torres.
Motion, oh. No, I got Commissioner Torres.
Okay.
Yeah. Motion pass is four three.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Thanks, guys. Okay, on to the next case, case number P two one dash zero eight zero. This is for a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for address at six sixty-five through six sixty-nine Grand Street. And I believe we have Mr. Joseph. Mr. Joseph, who left us last meeting. Hi, Mr. Joseph.
Hi, how are you, everybody?
Good.
Good. So I do have three experts this evening. I have Ted Hammer from Architecture. I have Calisto Burden from Burden Engineering. And I have Samuel Bellamy from Drosner Robin. And while we're bringing them up, counsel, can we confirm we're in receipt of notices and they're acceptable?
Thank you, counsel. I am receipt of the affidavit of publication and proof of mailing with respect to the application at six sixty-five, six sixty-nine Grand Street. Counsel, if I recall, this application, strike that, this property was the subject of an application relatively recently. And that application was denied. I've reviewed this application and this application is substantially different than that application. But I guess the biggest thing is we went from providing parking and now we're not providing parking.
Correct.
Which was one of the major questions and issues at that time. So I think the board is very familiar with the property. The board is very familiar with the property. So. We should be able to get right into it and deal with what's being proposed.
I. Yes, I hope so, because it is a separate application. We do need to.
Absolutely.
On our full testimony again. All right, so do we have Ted Hammer? Ted?
Okay, I was gonna ask you. I didn't catch that name again. I got Sam, I got Ted, and what's the other one?
Calisto? I'm gonna take a look as well, see if.
Yeah, that one I don't see.
Chris, Christopher Manos. That's someone from Ted's firm, so that.
All right, we got him.
Okay.
There any professionals out there on part of this? Can you please navigate to the bottom of your screen and raise your hand?
Yeah. And Calisto did just send me a message. He's, I know he's. At his computer. So Calisto, if you could raise your hand. Shoot a message as well.
Perhaps, Mr. Joseph, we can continue and monitor.
Yeah. So. Okay, so six six five, six six nine Grand Street. This is located mid-block on Grand Street in the mixed-use E-zone of the Morris Canal redevelopment plan. What the applicant's proposing is a new four-story mixed-use building. With commercial on the ground floor, twenty-three dwelling units above the ground floor. There's no parking proposed. As part of this application. In order to accomplish this, we do need preliminary and final major site plan approval. As well as two C variances. The first is for the lot area. Twenty thousand square feet required. We only have twelve thousand three forty-two. That's what's proposed. What we're doing here is actually combining two undersized lots. In this zone, so that the new larger lot will be more conforming than each of the. The properties on their own. The second variance is for the parking. Need twenty-six parking spaces. And we have zero parking spaces proposed. It was a prior application, decided denied by this board. The application number was P two zero one zero five. After that, that denial, the applicant and his professionals took another look at this. They decided that they were trying to meet too many competing interests. It wasn't possible in order to accommodate some of the concerns about parking, while also meeting the community's concerns. Regarding having usable. Commercial retail space. By eliminating the parking, we actually eliminated a lot of variances. There were seven total variances in the prior application. Now there are only two. So let's get into the architectural plan, so we can see what we're working with. And then we'll go into the engineering testimony to talk about the site conditions. So Ted, let's get you sworn in.
Okay.
All right, Ted, if you could raise your hand.
Mr. Hammer, do you swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name for me, just by your last and your address, please.
Theodore Hammer, H A M M E R. Addresses. One professional, this is one Executive Drive, Fort Lee, New Jersey.
Thank you. Witness this word.
Right, and Ted, the board did qualify you last time. Can you confirm that your license is current, good standing?
Yes, it is.
Hey, Mr. Hammer, you're qualified.
All right, Ted, if you want to go ahead and share your screen and walk us through the plans.
Will do.
Mr. Hammer, you're good?
Can you? See my screen?
We cannot. We cannot see your screen, Ted. There should be a green button at the bottom of your screen. When you hover your mouse over it.
Instead of. Holding up the board, Chris, can you put? My show on the screen, please?
Yes, can I ask whoever's in charge, can they let me in? I joined in from my computer. I, but I'm not. Actually, in the, I'm on my phone, but not on the computer. Could I be let in? A different method?
You can be let in on your computer if you raise your hand as an attendee.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's rejoin. You should be able to see the screen.
Yeah. Mr. Hammer, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
All right, take it away, Ted.
You just give me a moment. Can't see the screen right now, so. I can now. Okay, let me take. Let's take you through the vital statistics. Four-story building. Thirty-three thousand square feet total. Three residential floors over one retail floor. In this screen. You can see the. Rendering. The rendering is. Brick building with multi-colors, punched windows. Masonry, of course, with some. Highlights in the canopy and the cornice. The three residential floors over the one-story of. Retail. Have twenty-three units. There's. Five two-bedroom units and eighteen one-bedroom units. Units are notable that they're. Very good size. Eleven hundred and twenty-five square feet. In addition, they have extra-high. Ceilings. There's a thirteen-foot. Nine floor-to-floor height. So these units should be looked at more like loft units. Rather than just. Low ceiling apartments. The building is fifty-five foot high. Just compliant. And let me show you the first floor on the next page. Which will be the. Site plan. That's the basic site plan. It shows the roof of the building and the rear yard. To the lower portion. The building has an amenity space up on the roof of the residence. As well as that rear yard, which is available for. The retail users, should there be a need for that. The next. Slide shows. The. First floor. Which is shown there. Has the building entrance. Over to the left. And the right-hand side has a retail area of about. Fifty-five hundred. Square feet. So it's good size. It may have. One occupant or two or three. There's a number of doors facing Grand Street that will allow. For flexibility in the leasing of that space.
There's Ted, Ted, on the prior application, we had a. A driveway, I believe it was referred to as a tunnel. At some point, going through the center of this building. Leading to some parking in the rear, correct?
Right, there is no tunnel anymore.
Tunnel council. We've eliminated that. We've eliminated the parking in the back. Counsel, talk to me. About the variances. What are the variances sought now?
Sure, so the variances we're seeking now, Ted, if you want to show us on that, on the map, right on the front there.
This screen, you're making me dizzy. Can we slow down? Who is that?
Agreed. Chris, I think that's, I think that's you. Why don't we just zoom, why don't we just zoom out and leave this full screen? We're very close now.
If you can see it all, that's fine.
Yeah, let's just leave it like that. So we have two variances associated with this application. The first variance is the minimum lot area. Minimum lot area in this zone is twenty thousand square feet. We're unable to acquire any additional lots, and what we're doing is combining two lots together to get closer to that twenty thousand square feet. But we're still not there. The second variance we're seeking is for the parking. We're required to have parking here. We don't have any parking. We don't have any parking because no curb cuts are permitted on Grand Street. So without a curb cut, you can't get to a driveway. That's how we eliminated all those variances associated with the last application. So what we can do is we can bring up Sam to give us some planning testimony on those two, on those two variances.
Mr. Joseph, I think that is a good idea. Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Chris, can you stop sharing your screen? And let's get. Let's get Sam up here.
I'll take this opportunity, if your engineer's here, just can he, he or she please raise their hand? So we can promote them. Thank you.
All right, Sam, let's get you sworn in.
Mr. Bellamy was already sworn and recognized as an expert before this board council. Mr. Bellamy, I'll remind you, you're still under oath.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Bellamy, you're still qualified. Go ahead.
Thank you, acting chair. Okay, so getting right into the deviations that we're asking for tonight. This property is located in the mixed-use E-residential M U E R zone of the Morris Canal redevelopment plan. So we are asking for the deviation for a minimum lot size. We are with this application consolidating two lots, known as lots four and five into one lot. Lot four has an existing non-conforming lot area of three thousand seven hundred ninety square feet, and lot five has an existing non-conforming lot area of. Eight thousand five hundred fifty-two square feet. So with the proposed lot consolidation, we'll create a total lot area of twelve thousand three hundred forty-two square feet. And the minimum lot area requirement is twenty thousand square feet in the zone. So with this lot consolidation, we are bringing these existing non-conforming properties into closer conformity with the minimum lot area requirements. As stated. We aren't consolidating, we aren't able to consolidate any other lots. We believe that this lot size is sufficient size to provide for the proposed mixed-use building. With an active ground floor, commercial use that we're proposing. We are proposing twenty-three residential units, and that meets the minimum, the maximum density requirement in the zone of the redevelopment plan. And we are also complying with all yard and coverage bulk requirements. And we'll comply with the green area ratio, G A R standards. So really, with this lot size and through the conformity with the bulk standards. I think this is an appropriate lot size. And we do meet the criteria, the C-two criteria where the benefits would outweigh the detriment. Getting into the parking deviation that we're asking for tonight. This redevelopment plan does happen to have conflicting parking requirements if this board remembers the prior application. So the project is now proposing zero parking spaces where a minimum total of twenty-six spaces is required. That includes point nine spaces, twenty-one spaces for the total for the residential. And five spaces for the retail proposed. This property does front onto Grand Street. Grand Street does have a requirement for active uses. Along Grand Street, which we are proposing with the commercial. Portion of this, of this building. And the provided retail, there's my opinion that is more consistent with the purpose of the mixed-use district rather than a ground floor. Parking garage or. So getting, moving on from that, we are providing a bicycle parking room that meets the minimum bicycle parking standards. And I'm going to actually share an exhibit that I prepared. The fork can hold on one second, and I believe we will need to mark this.
Yeah, we will need to mark this into, into evidence.
So this is a transportation network analysis prepared by Dresden Robin.
This will be A two.
A two.
Okay, so this is a transportation network analysis. So with this, we're showing a couple of different alternative forms of transportation that are located in this. Surrounding area. So as you can see, there are a number of bus stops located along Grand Street. And further along Communipaw Avenue and Garfield Avenue. This property is also located point five miles away from the Garfield Avenue Light Rail Station, so we're really right within that. You know, that typical walkable transit-oriented development area. There's also a couple of city bicycle parking stations. One, as you go towards Berry Lane Park, approximately five-minute walk from the subject property. And then there's one further down by going to Lafayette Park. There's a number of green spaces in the area. You have Berry Lane Park, about point three miles, Lafayette Park, further Liberty State Park. And then also Bergen Hill Park. This property is, as I said, in a mixed-use district. Going further along Grand Street and then on to Communipaw Avenue, you do have a neighborhood commercial area. That does have commercial needs. So what this project is proposing really is to. Remove the existing non-conforming industrial use. Develop the currently vacant property along Grand Street with a mixed-use building that is consistent. With the redevelopment plan and would really add to the commercial serving area here. So as stated, from the prior application. We are proposing no parking, so we won't have any curb cuts along Grand Street. This is another standard in the redevelopment plan where. The redevelopment plan does not permit any curb cuts along Grand Street. Instead, what it calls for is the extension of. These streets, the north. Northwest of the property to extend along across Grand Street and then connect with an alleyway through the rear. So our property is not adjacent to or these, these street extensions. That are contemplated do not run through the property, and we actually are the only property along Grand Street here with this condition. So really, this is a hardship where we are unable to provide a curb cut along Grand Street, so likewise, we are unable. We are not proposing any parking to remove that deviation here. Sorry, let me just go back to my notes here. So with that, with the removal, we also are removing two existing curb cuts that are on Grand Street. One for that industrial use and one a little further that accesses the vacant lot. So we are removing two existing non-conforming curb cuts. So what this does is it removes traffic from going on to and out of the site. There are contemplated bike lanes that are, that are to run along Grand Street. So that bicycle network can now run uninterrupted, long Grand Street without worrying about any cars turning into or out of the subject property here. So I think with these deviations that we're asking for, they really can meet. Either the C-one criteria arising from a hardship. An exceptional situation affecting this specific property in this mixed-use district. And also the C-two criteria where in the benefits would outweigh the detriment here. The benefits being not providing any curb cuts, removing existing non-conforming curb cuts, and then. That's the detriment of not providing any parking here. So I do believe that this project does meet the purposes of the municipal land use law. Granting the development would guide the appropriate use and development of the property that would promote the general welfare. This is an appropriate mixed-use building, which is a. A permitted use in the mixed-use district. This will provide a commercial to add to the need in this area. This density is also consistent with the redevelopment plan and will promote it. The population density that's consistent with purpose E. And this is also an infill development, like I said, would remove an existing non-conforming industrial use. Develop a vacant lot with the desirable. Visual environment. We are adding six street trees along Grand Street there. So that would also promote a desirable. Um, so that would also promote a desirable, uh, visual environment. Um, the granting the deviations will not result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare. As I said, th- this building is complying with all other bulk requirements in, in the mixed-use district here. Um, providing yards and, um, areas that allow for light air and open space. Um, like I said, we are adding six new street trees, um, landscaping in the rear yard, shrubs and trees. And we are also adding, um, green roofing. I believe it's one thousand five hundred twenty-nine square feet uh, and a stormwater detention, um, system in the rear yard that will provide, um, sustainable landscape elements that will address any environmental concerns, and that's also consistent with the G A R standards. Um, we are proposing a green area ratio of point three six. That actually exceeds the, um, the minimum requirement of point two-five here. Um, likewise, the granting the deviation will not result in a substantial detriment to the zoning ordinance or zone plan. Um, the proposed project is consistent with the, uh, the purpose of the mixed-use district here, which is to create a new residential neighbor, neighborhood with small-scale convenience and comparison shopping catering to neighborhood, uh, needs. Um, this, this project also consistent with several, um, goals of the redevelopment plan. Um, some of them include, uh, preserving the Lafayette neighborhood, um, resulting, um, industrial encroachments. So we are removing the, uh, industrial use. Um, provide opportunities for both the neighborhood level retail, which we are doing on the ground floor here along Grand Street. And then, um, and this really, um, hits home on the parking deviation that we're asking for. Um, it's to ensure positive land use impact and maximum benefits from the light rail transit by encouraging the redevelopment areas close into light rail transit station as mixed-use and higher intensity development consistent with the principles of smart growth and the state's transit, um, village initiative. So I think we are doing this, this area is, um, I, I think does have access to multiple, um, forms of other transportation. Um, and there, it is my opinion, there's no substantial detriment from the parking deviation that we are asking for, um, tonight. And, um, furthermore, this, this project is consistent with the land use plan and the master plan, um, providing for housing options. This, the master plan also identifies the subject property to be along the Ocean Summit neighborhood Arlington Park to State Street Activity District. Um, so the proposed retail here mixed-use building will also enhance that, um, neighborhood-serving activity district. Um, so with that, I, I do think this, this project meets both the negative and, um, positive and negative criteria. Um, I think that concludes my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sam. And I say we do have, uh, Calisto now for some, some brief engineering testimony.
Um, Mr. Joseph, let me ask the board if they have any questions first to, to Bellamy. Anyone? So, Bellamy, you said, how many parking spots were you, you supposed to have there?
Uh, twenty-six parking spaces.
And you're providing zero?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone? Okay, Mr. Joseph, we can move on.
Great. Uh, all right, Calisto, let's get you sworn in.
Please raise your hand to use whether you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth of what you got.
Yes, I do.
Please state your full names, by your last name, and state your address for the record, please.
Calisto, C A L I S T O, Burton, B E R T I N. And my office is at sixty-six Glen Avenue in Glen Rock, New Jersey.
Thank you, the witness is sworn.
Thank you, Iris. Mr. Burton, have you been qualified? Uh, let, let's just qualify. You can just tell us your background a little bit?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, um, I've testified in Jersey City for thirty years. But I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and five other states. I'm the principal of Burton Engineering. And, um, um, my specialty is site plan engineering.
And your license is current and, and in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're qualified.
All right, Calisto, if you just want to take us, um, quickly through the site conditions, just some, some brief engineering testimony.
Yes, everything's been, uh, discussed. Should I pull up the plans and share my screen?
Sure.
Am I allowed to do that? Share a screen? Okay. So plans are up?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, I'm sorry I was late. I, uh, my schedule wasn't correct, so I, I know Mr. Hammer and, and, uh, Mr. Bellamy have already testified a lot. Um, you've already know the location of the site. I'm showing, um, I'm, I'm going to be referring to the site plans which have been submitted to the, uh, board. Um, and, and, and in the center of this plan, the cover sheet shows the site on the south side of Grand Street and we're a mid-block site. The existing site, it, it's, it's a little over twelve thousand, twelve thousand three hundred square feet. It's a sort of trapezoidal shape. It consists of two tax lots, lot five and lot four. And on a lot five is vacant, but lot four contains a building. Um, that was a taxi service or something like that. So the, the proposal is to remove the building and any other improvements and to create one lot. We do, uh, anticipate combining the lots into one. Um, I'm sure you went over the plan, so I'm, I'm now drawing C two point two, which is the site plan. Clearly, from an engineering standpoint, the key features are that we're replacing the, um, entire frontage, curbs and sidewalks, uh, and resurfacing, uh, Grand Street for the full width of the street. From along the site frontage, other projects are being built in the area that'll do the same thing, so. You, you know, a, a section of Grand Street here will all be resurfaced. So the building is shown in a beige color. Just going back to the street, uh, you'll see there's brick pavers right against the curb. And in between the brick pavers are tree wells, so that was referred to. We are planting, uh, six street trees. And in those brick pavers, you'll see a, a, a round dot with some lines around. Those are lanterns. So all these, um, so there's three lanterns. So the, the intention is to provide a new straight, streetscape in accordance with the Jersey City standards. Um, looking at the building, um, Mr. Hammer probably went over this. There is a rooftop patio that's shown in the hatched area that would be a paver. Uh, it is surrounded by some landscaping on the roof. And then the front half or the north half of the building is where we're going to have our air conditioning units. Um, they will not be able to be seen from the street and we will have a fence up uh, in the middle of the roof that'll block view of these rooftop units, um, from the people using the patio. Actually, most of the condensers are very small. They're only a couple of feet tall. In the backyard, there's a pavement, there's a patio for the use of the residents. And then the rest of it is, uh, landscaped. Uh, it's just shown here as plain, but we do have a landscape plan. I'll go to the next plan. Um, I'm going to destroying C two point three, which is our, uh, grading and utility plan. And it was testified to, we are providing stormwater detention. Can't provide it under the building, can't provide it in front of the building, so it's shown in the back of the building. So we have an underground detention system. Which takes the roof, uh, mainly roof water, so the roof water is clean. There's an outfall con, control structure that meters the water and we tie back into the municipal, um, sewer system. The idea here is that we will be reducing runoff per the state standards. Right? And then the rest of the runoff comes from the rear yard. Again, since there is no parking on the site or no pavement, we do not have to worry about suspended solids. Okay? Now I'm moving to sheet two point four. I, I assume you, you've heard most of this, so I'm, I'm moving fast. Someone can yell at me if you'd like me to slow down. Again, the, the street trees are shown along the, uh, the street frontage. And that's the dark circle with an X in the center. So there's six of those. In backyard, we, we surround the rear backyard with a variety of, uh, of shrubs and in another tree back there. Um, there is also going to be a six-foot-high privacy fence around the rear property lines for the, uh, privacy of the residents. Okay, and then we just get into the details, but, uh, that's the overall presentation on the site plan. We did get a, a, a review letter from the engineer and we will be able to comply with all the requirements.
Great. Thank you, Calisto. Uh, does the board have any questions for our engineer?
Any questions, guys? Anyone? Okay.
All right. Great, Calisto, if, uh, you could stop sharing your screen, I, I think, I think what the board has heard is that we have two variances that can be justified by the hardship of the site. Not able to acquire any more land. It's impossible for us to meet the twenty thousand square feet minimum lot area requirement. And curb cuts are not permitted on Grand Street. Um, prior application, uh, attempted to, to make some type of parking arrangement here work. It, it didn't work. And we needed five additional variances in order to even try and make that work. Um, so we have no, we have no curb cut, no parking. With that, that concludes our direct testimony. We're happy to field questions from the board.
Uh, board have any questions? General questions for anyone who presented? If we don't, we'll, uh, move on to public. So we have anybody from the public? Uh, this is case P two one dash zero eight zero six six five two six six nine Grand Street. Anyone from the public, uh, wanna chime in, ask a question? Anyone?
Mr. Chair, seem normal public, we would like to close the public portion of the meeting.
Stack it in. Okay, the public is now closed, and I think we have Mr. Matt Ward.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, so I will provide some comments here on, uh, some of the testimony given tonight, or just to recap some of the points that were made. Um, I think it's been mentioned several times that this case was, uh, or similar case to this at the same site. Um, was denied under case number P twenty dash, well, one zero five. Uh, staff summarized, uh, some of these comments, um, and some of the background in a memo dated, uh, four twelve twenty twenty-one. Um, I'm just gonna bring up that memo, uh, and share with you some of the images, uh, in it.
Matt, I think you froze on us.
Can you give a little more context to some? Am I back?
Yeah, you froze there a little bit.
You missed the last thirty seconds, what you said.
Okay, um, so I'm just gonna share my screen so I can, uh, scroll through some images that were in the staff memo, uh, dated four twelve twenty twenty-one. I guess it would, it might explain a little bit more about some of the testimony that was given to you tonight and some of the, uh, reasons, uh, given, uh, by the professionals, um, of the applicant. Uh, it may be difficult to see here, but this is the, uh, subject site outlined in red. Um, to the, I would say, I believe this is the, the south or east. Of the subject site, this is a large gravelled site, uh, which is more than the minimum lot size. And, uh, to the right of the subject site, I'm gonna outline it with, uh, my arrow. Uh, this is another, um, site that is also above the twenty thousand square feet minimum lot size. Uh, so, uh, there is little to, no reason for those applicants or those property owners to, uh, to combine with this property owner, um, if they, unless they've fa, found a reasonable term, uh, which wasn't testified about tonight, um, but, um, there's little market reason, um, for them to, to, to come consolidate lots. Um, that being said, um, there are further, uh, design standards in the zoning, um, that are, can be seen through, uh, this image. Uh, so there is, uh, these roads. We're talking about Westervelt and Street, Street on the other side of Grand. Uh, per the zoning, those are supposed to extend in a straight to, uh, at least straight, if not aligned, uh, to create, uh, four-way intersections, uh, where those meet and cross Grand Street. And, and then, uh, where the old Morse Canal is, uh, there would be an alley or a park that would connect these roads and to continue, uh, content, to make a continuous circuit and not, uh, create a dead-end condition. This is the, uh, same lot, can, you know, the lot lines have essentially been the same. The, just the consolidation has changed over time. Uh, this is slightly a different, uh, um, alignment of the map. But, uh, this is an image from our city circulation element, twenty fifty, figure four point four dash one. Uh, the right-of-way needs map. This is showing the, the project. Not all of the roads called out in zoning, uh, but this is calling it out as a conceptual project. Um, where there is a, a note, there's not showing any connection from Westervelt. They're showing a connection of State Street and they're showing that alley road. Um, or loop road that I mentioned that goes along the right-of-way of the old Morse Canal. The zoning that's in place now, uh, specifies that alley as, uh, land to be developed as a park and or circulation alley of thirty feet in width. And just to explain a little bit more again, or to reiterate again, that is beyond the, the property of the subject site. So, uh, in the last application, uh, as, as stated by the applicant, there was a number of, uh, variances that were requested, including minimum parking, um, which they were not meeting in the last application. And some of the records put on, uh, some of the, sorry, some of the reasons put on the record by the commissioners uh, was regarding, um, parking, um, but also regarding access. Um, and, uh, a concern for safe access into the site from Grand Street. Um, the unit count in this application versus the prior has not changed. Uh, and the, the retail has slightly increased. Um, they are maintaining, uh, similar design of their rear yard. In fact, they've increased the rear yard, uh, recreation area. Um, and I'd say that it isn't keeping with the zoning, um, and is directly adjacent to the, the planned, uh, park area where the old Morse Canal, um, lies. If this, if the board makes a motion to approve this application, uh, we've written six conditions, uh, that that you should, uh, that we recommend. Um, and I would just like to ask the applicant if they've had time to review those and if they would be able to comply with them.
Yes, uh, the applicant has reviewed and finds all conditions of approval acceptable.
Um, I think I'll just end with stating, uh, that, um, that uh, parking is always, uh, a large concern, um, for, for many commissioners, many residents in Jersey City. Um, and the, the fact that there is no parking in this application, I believe is a direct result of, um, the denial of the prior application. Um, and how the applicant chose to, to reapply. Um, that being said, parking also has a, an impact on the affordability, uh, of an apartment uh, or a home. And, uh, the fact that there is little, there is no parking provided in this, this, uh, application does impact the price point of these, these, uh, apartments, which might be of, of some concern to applicants i- in creating affordable housing. Um, it might be can a policy decision to, to consider lower parking minimums. Um, in fact, parking maximums in many areas, which we, uh, we zone throughout Jersey City. Um, this might be, uh, something to consider here for each one.
Matt, I have a, I have a quick question for you. You said the, to the two reasons for, and I, the reasons maybe for denial on the first application were lack of parking and, uh, access. Do you think that that, obviously, they're not providing any, uh, parking on this, on this application? We had, I had, we had seven before that were off-street, I believe. Um, and Mr. Joseph said that if they had to do that, they had to request five additional variances. So do you feel like the, at least the access has improved on this, uh, application relative to the other one or?
Um, there is, the only access that, uh, occurs on-site now is pedestrian access, um, which they are complying with and improving. Uh, they are doing a five-foot front yard setback. They are doing a five-foot front yard setback, widening the sidewalk and improving pedestrian safety. That being said, there's also no vehicular traffic, so there's no, no longer any turning movements in and across that sidewalk or along the, the busy corridor, which is Grand Street.
Okay, thank you, Matt. I'll entertain a motion either way.
I would like to make a motion to approve case P two, one dash zero eight zero as presented toward, to the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On a motion made and seconded by Commissioner Torres. Motion with conditions. Acting Vice Chair Takur.
I.
Commissioner Gangdon.
No. My recommendations still remain the same from the last vote in regards to the parking. There is a need for twenty-six parking. Here we are, not even one parking. So my vote is now.
Commissioner Allen.
Um, nice building, nice design. I'm gonna know just because of the parking.
Commissioner Cruz.
No.
Commissioner Horton. Commissioner Torres. Acting Chair Gonzalez.
This is gonna be a no for me.
Okay, motion fails. Four in, or sorry, two in favor and five against.
Chair, as is customary by the board, when we have a motion to approve that the vote turns out in the negative, it would be appropriate for the chair to entertain a motion to deny and just see if that passes the same way.
Uh, thank you, counsel. I was actually going to just add that. So I need, I'll entertain a motion to deny the application from one of our commissioners.
Make a motion to deny case P two, one dash zero eight zero.
Second.
Have a motion to deny and a second, that means a yes vote is to deny the application. Roll call.
Okay, acting Vice Chair Takur.
Yes.
Commissioner Gangdon.
Commissioner Gangdon, you're muted.
I think she's frozen.
Okay.
Takur, you voted yes to approve and you just voted no.
Yes.
Yes to deny.
I'm on the same page.
So you voted to approve the application.
And I
and now we have a motion to deny.
So I'm denying, so I don't, I, how do I stay on the same page?
You vote no.
Oh, so I would know.
Right, so a vote in the affirmative is to deny, a vote in the negative would be the same as if you voted to approve
Okay.
on the prior motion, just so we're all clear.
Okay, so no.
Okay, Commissioner Gangdon.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner Torres.
No.
Acting Chair Gonzalez.
Yes, to deny.
Motion carries five in favor, two against. On a motion to deny.
Okay, thank you, guys. Iris, how are you feeling? Did you want a break? We've got a couple of long ones and a couple of short ones, but if you want to take a break, this would be a perfect place.
If we can, about five minutes would be great.
Five minutes, that's perfect. Nine oh five to nine ten. We'll see you guys in a bit. Okay, guys, we'll try to get back together here. Iris, you're doing good.
I am.
Thank you for hanging in there. You're good.
Thank you. Thank you for the multiple breaks, actually.
Really, no, we all need them. All right, so we'll call the next case, case number sixteen on our agenda, case P two, one dash zero, two, two. This is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances, addresses C six, thirty-three Newark Ave. I believe we have Mr. Joseph again.
Yes, we do. Dennis Davino is our architect this evening. Counsel, this was a notice case. If we can confirm notices are acceptable, mark them in evidence, please.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Chairman, I am to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to case P two, one dash zero, two, two, at six, three, three Newark Avenue. All does appear to be in order. We can go ahead and mark those as A one.
Great.
Thank you.
Dare I say it, but this seems to be straightforward.
It, it sure, it sure does. I only have one expert this evening, our architect. We're, we're gonna jump right into it. Stephen Joseph for the applicant. This is six, thirty-three Newark Avenue. It's located on the west side of Newark Ave. It's between Hoboken and Central Avenue, although you do have that five-way intersection over by Hoboken Ave. It, it's in, it's in zone five of Journal Square twenty sixty. And the applicant's proposing the renovation in addition to an existing building. This is a, a three-story with basement. So it could be considered a four-story under the zoning code. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final major site plan approval. We have two, two minor variances. The first is for recreational space. None exists, none, none is being proposed. This is largely just a renovation of an existing building. The second is for storefront transparency. The requirement here is pretty high, eighty percent is required. There's an existing storefront. Thirty-five point three percent existing, we're increasing that as much as we can to thirty-nine and a half percent, but we still don't meet that eighty percent requirement. The applicant's working with existing, with an existing building. There's some limitations and hardships from that. You'll, you'll hear from Dennis on that. But let's, let's get Dennis sworn in and we'll, we'll jump into the plans.
Do you, please raise your right hand. Do you swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last and your address, please.
Dennis Michael Davino, D E Beasen Victor I N O. And our office is at four thirty Commutapole Avenue, Jersey City.
Thank you.
Dennis, you've testified before the board many times in the past. Your, your license is current and in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Davino is qualified. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Dennis, if you want to go ahead and share your screen.
Yeah. Well, thank, thank the board for hearing our application tonight. I have a couple, probably a couple of visuals that are not in the package, so we could probably mark them in very quickly. And basically, it's just to give the board a better view of where the site is and, and what the building looks like. So we'll start with the aerial view. Can you see that?
Uh, you, you're not sharing your screen. I, I don't think it clicked, so if, at the bottom of your screen, you should see green button.
And counsel will mark those starting as A two, and you could just go ahead and mark them.
Great.
Do we have that?
It's not, it's not popping up yet, Dennis.
Okay.
There you go.
Got it.
There we go. All right, so we see, we, we see the agenda now. Oh, you clicked out of it. So we should give you a couple of options of screens to, to share.
I'm trying. I'm coming up. No, geez.
There you go. You're sharing your screen now of your desktop.
You got that?
Got it.
Okay, great. All right, so this is satellite view or aerial view, the six, thirty.
We'll mark that as, we'll mark that as A two, Dennis.
Right, okay. Six, thirty, Commutapole Ave is, is five, five lots off of Central. You can see the county courthouse here, so it's a three-story, three-story above grade, one story below grade. If I could take this one in. I guess you see that one, that is the entry door to the residential units on, on two and three.
We'll mark that as a three.
All right, and this one is you the retail store known as sold out is a high-end sneaker or shoe store, so.
Mark that as a, a four.
Right, and you're right. So. All right, so start with, I'd like to just kind of quickly review those two variances and reasons for these. The first one is the eighty-five, I believe it's eighty or eighty-five percent glass area. The client was relatively adamant about trying to maintain that existing storefront. They just put it in about a couple of years ago. It's brand new. And it serves their purpose of how much glass they need, because the property is only twenty-two feet wide. And remember, you also have an entrance to the residential floors, so there's not a lot of space to put glass. If you look at the entire frontage, it is, you know, twelve foot high. So plus, they want to make sure that they can maintain the, essentially the same signage panel that they had, which is a little over thirteen square feet. And then, of course, they, we'll be incorporating a security screen as well. So when you start to incorporate all these architectural components and all these security components, it really doesn't become feasible to, to, you know, to put eighty percent glass there. So that's the reason why we're trying to maintain, there's several reasons why we're trying to maintain, maintain the glass as is. The second is the recreational space, again. Yeah, I mean, the property is only, again, twenty-two feet wide. It's an existing building, three stories. It's very be difficult to try to find a place to put a recreational area. What we did do is this, on the second floor unit that faces the back, and I'll show you momentarily. We did incorporate a two-hundred-square-foot outdoor deck area. So hopefully, I mean, it's gonna qualify for some outdoor space and some recreation space. But, you know, the property is the first floor is gonna be a hundred percent lot coverage, and again, I'll briefly explain why we need that. So it becomes more and more difficult to get that, that, that much recreational state, space in a, in a site like this. So very quickly, you can see the building area, how much area that we're actually adding to the space. The rear of the building is the only thing that we're putting, putting the addition on. We're allowed to go sixty, eighty-five feet back from the front property line per ordinance. So that's only, essentially amounts to about a seventeen-foot addition to the rear. So you can identify how much space we're getting in the basement, how much space, additional space is a little, eleven hundred and sixty-eight square feet. First floor adding eleven hundred and sixty-one square feet, and then the second and third floor is by that seventeen-foot rear ex, extension, four hundred and fifty and seven hundred and ninety-one square feet. We were able to achieve, I'll move over to the floor plans very quickly. On the basement level. The, the owners of the property, also the owners of the shoe store, and it's a retail space right now. It only has about four hundred and fifty square feet, which you'll, you can, you will see in this, in this drawing here, four hundred and fifty square.
Fifty square, fifty square feet.
Of sales.
Of sales floor.
I'm getting. Can everyone hear me?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
So, and there is only three hundred and eighty square feet of stock room. So you can see it for any retail store, especially shoes, which has a, a large stock. They need that additional floor area. So in the basement, by putting that addition on, in the basement here, we're able to capture eleven hundred and sixty-eight square feet of area where we could stock product. And when we put that area on the first floor right here, you can see that we, we can get an additional five hundred and sixty square feet of stock. We actually have three hundred and seventy square feet of now office space. Where before, the three hundred and eighty square feet that was stocked included office space here. Because, you know, they need not just the offices, but, you know, their, their online sales are, are booming, so they need a place to to, to set up those sales and to get those out the door. So you could see that's a, you know, the main reason why this application So, uh, you could see that's a, you know, the main reason why this application is before the, is before the board is to get that. All that additional space on that, uh, that, that commercial level. When you move up to the second and third floor. It's, um. The second floor, uh, is, uh, two bedrooms and essentially a one-bedroom in the front of the second floor. Uh, by adding that seventeen, uh, feet to the rear and squaring off the building on floors two and three. We are able to create two nice-sized two-bedroom units, uh, essentially mirrored each other on both floors two and three. Uh, the, you can see here where's the, the two hundred and, I think it's about two hundred and fifteen square foot. Area of, of outdoor space for this rear unit on the second floor, which has a couple of vegetation buffers on either side. And then the second floor, a third floor is the same footprint. Uh, the elevations have been, uh, designed in such a way where. You could see, you saw the, uh, all the photograph, um, of the. Uh, of the existing structure of this existing facade. Uh, it does need, um, a bit of a renovation. Uh, so we are removing all the existing vinyl, uh, siding, replacing all the windows. With new double-hung Andersons, replacing the siding with hardy plank, uh, creating a new sign panel. Uh, removing this aluminum cornice that was covered up. Not sure what's under it, but we are proposing a, a new corner. Extension, uh, with a four-bracket design and five embossed panels. Um, the colors are probably easier to go over to the rendering, but the colors are, we're proposing for the hardy plank is an arctic white. All the trim is an ivory gray, and then we're using a tile, uh, around the front. Um, storefront, we're using a, um, white, an art, a white, a, um, subway tile here with a kind of a. Uh, four different, uh, shades of blue, uh, for somewhat of a mosaic underneath the main store, uh, glass. Um, so that's basically it. I'll shoot over to the, um, rendering and. If all goes well, that's what it'll look like. Uh, you can see the hardy plank, the, uh. The double hung windows and then the new sign panel. This sign panel, the last, the last, uh, visual is that. I think our drawings actually show this sign panel as a wood. We're actually going to propose, be proposing this. Uh, it's called a Geo Lam, which is an aluminum panel with an embossed vinyl that makes it kind of look like, uh, wood. And this is, this color is called teak. So, uh, Steve and I could, we'll probably put this in as exhibit four.
A five.
A five.
Okay. So. That's, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davino. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Davino? Commissioner Horton said no. Anyone else? Everybody okay?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
Very quickly, I forgot there will be a, will be a street tree, um. Uh, install, uh, planted and, uh, new sidewalks.
Even better. Good.
That, uh, that does conclude our direct testimony.
Thank you, Joseph. Um, this time I'll open it up to the public. If anyone from the public wants to speak, question, uh, case number P two one dash zero two two. Um, six thirty-three Newark Ave. This is your time to speak. You can, uh, raise your hand or dial star nine from your phone. Mr. Davino, if you can stop sharing your screen.
Okay.
Please, thank you. Anyone from the public?
Chairman, can I motion to close?
Second. Thank you, Anna Second. Motion, uh, meaning, uh, public is now closed.
And then, okay, Dennis, there, there should be a bottom, uh, at the bottom of your screen, it should be a button to, that says stop sharing.
I'm looking, don't see it. Oh, there. There it is.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Krail.
Yeah, um, I, I like the application overall. Uh, I felt that the, uh, variances requested, uh. Were timinist in nature and, uh. Withinstanding with a development that's proposed. Uh, staff, uh, is in favor of the application.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair would like to make a motion to approve case. P two one dash zero two two as presented to the board tonight.
Seconded. Motion is made and seconded for approval.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Takor.
Aye.
And Acting Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
All in favor, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good night.
You too. Next case, uh, being called up now is case, uh, seventeen on our agenda. Case number P two one dash zero nine two. This is for a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. The address is one sixty-five Ocean Ave. And I think we have Mr. Regan.
Promoted.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair. Frank Regan. Uh, here on behalf of the applicant, um, I do have, uh, one witness, and I have the applicant available. So if we could just promote them, uh, it's Trevor Curtis. Uh, is our engineer, uh, and Dr. Michael Skolnick, uh, is the applicant. And I guess while we're waiting for them, this is a notice application, and I did provide the, uh, necessary newspaper and. Property owner notices to, uh, the board and council.
Evening, counsel. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. I've had the opportunity to review it. All does appear to be in order. We can go ahead and mark those as A one for the record.
Uh, thank you.
You're on, Mr. Regan. I think we have Mr. Skolnick.
Yep, and I'm looking for, oh, there's Trevor. Okay. Uh, good evening again, um, with respect to one sixty-five O- Ocean Avenue. Um, the property is located in the Ocean Avenue South redevelopment area and subject to the applicable redevelopment plan. The applicant acquired the property earlier this year with the intention to, uh, renovate the building and utilize it, uh, in conjunction with his dental practice. Uh, he's got a number of similar facilities in other parts of New Jersey. Uh, so he's going to operate, uh, an additional facility out of two floors of the building. Uh, and, and the third floor would be, would be used for medical office. Um, the, the properties, it's an existing bank, a former bank building, actually built in, in nineteen twenty. Uh, and associated, uh, existing parking lot. Um, lot eighteen, uh, is located in the zone two, the historic neighborhood mixed use. Uh, and contains the existing building, uh, which will be renovated, uh, as noted, and that use is permitted. Uh, both of those uses, the dental and medical are permitted, uh, in zone two. Lot nineteen is located in zone one, which is neighborhood mixed use and contains the parking lot, uh, which serves the existing building and will continue to do so. Uh, and parking is a permitted accessory use in zone one. Um, a- as I indicated, uh, it's an existing, uh, building. Uh, so there are no exterior changes that are being proposed to the building, other than a small addition. Uh, for an elevator and egress stairs, which are required by building code, um, based on the, the, the proposed use of the building. Uh, so the, other than that, small addition to the building, um. The other improvements will be limited to interior renovations as well as improvements to the parking lot with respect to, to new lighting, landscaping and drainage. And our, the engineer will touch upon those. Um. There are a number of deviations, three deviations in a variant that are being requested. Um, they really relate for the most part to the, uh, to the existing conditions. Uh, which are being, uh, improved, uh, as a result of the improvements that are being proposed by the applicant. Uh, one of the requirements is, is with respect to a minimum building height, um, which is actually four stories. Uh, but the existing building is three stories and the proposed addition is going to be three stories consistent with that. Uh, so without further ado, I'll, I'll have, uh, our traffic, I'm sorry, our, our civil engineer, uh, Trevor Curtis. Uh, gets sworn in and proceed with his testimony. If you want to raise your right hand.
Do you swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth? So help you God.
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
My name is Trevor Curtis, C U R T I S. Um, a senior project manager, L two A land design, uh, at sixty-six Grand Avenue. In Englewood, New Jersey, zero seven six three one.
Thank you. Witness is sworn.
Excuse me?
Yeah, you were sworn.
Thank you.
Trevor, uh, if you could just give the board the benefit of your professional educational background and, and prior testimony work so they can qualify you.
Sure. Uh, I have a bachelor's, uh, in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I am a state licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I've appeared before, uh, numerous. Planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey within the last four years.
Okay, Mr. Curtis, is your license current today?
Yes.
Okay, you're, uh, you're qualified.
Trevor, you're going to, uh, share your screen? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There you go.
So you were, uh, y- you obviously involved in the preparation of the site plans that were submitted as part of the application. Uh, which I guess are on the screen now. So that if you could just proceed to, uh, you know, just walk the board quickly through, uh, the existing conditions and proposed, uh, improvements.
Correct. Okay. So, uh, as Mr. Regan, uh, stated, this is a. Application for preliminary and final site plan approval for the Child Smiles Building renovation. Um, which includes the renovation of the existing, uh, two-story, fifteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five gross square foot dental medical office building. Uh, interior improvements, uh, with additional site improvements, um, including, um, the right-of-way. Um, sidewalks, the asphalt parking lot, um, and the closure of, um, two curb cuts, uh, within the right-of-way, the surrounding rights-of-way. Um, the subject property is located at one sixty-five Ocean Avenue and defined by the Jersey City tax maps. Block twenty-nine, three oh five, lots eighteen and nineteen within the Ocean Avenue South redevelopment area. Uh, specifically zones one, neighborhood mixed use and zone two, historic neighborhood mixed use. These are the site plans that were provided to the board as part of our application. Um, if you want me to mark them as an exhibit.
No, I think we're okay. Right, counsel?
Yeah, counsel, we're not going to need to mark any of these. They were submitted. And counsel, quite frankly, I think we're all very familiar with the site and the building. As I understand it, based on your opening statement. It's an existing building from a long time ago that's going to be repurposed into this dental office with an additional medical office, uh, in the building. Can we talk about the two hundred and eighty-seven square foot elevator and stair addition? Tell us, uh, the improvements to the parking lot. If you're doing anything with drainage, great. If not, that is also okay. I understand we're closing some curbs. Quite frankly, uh, sounds like all of the deviations are existing and are actually, because we're not meeting. The required, uh, which is unusual and, and else there are other parts of the state.
Yep, I think, I think you have it right, counsel. So Trevor, if you can maybe just go to your site plan.
Got it.
And, uh, and just.
I agreed, you know, this is, uh, pretty straightforward. I like, I can mark this. This is our site plan colorized to just better represent, um, the improvements.
Two, and you can submit it, uh, after the hearing. So we have it for the file.
Got it. Okay, so pretty straightforward. The existing building, uh, will be renovated, interior improvements. Um, while the, the exterior facade will remain in, uh, its historic condition. Um, the existing two stories will be, um, uh, now a three-story with two floors of dental and one floor of medical office. Um, as per building code, a two hundred and eighty-seven square foot elevator egress stair. Um, addition is proposed, uh, in the, um, south western corner of the building. Um. The asphalt parking lot currently is, uh, dilapidated. Um, we are proposing to remove the existing. Um, bank teller drive-through windows, which are, uh, actually prohibited uses in the redevelopment zone. Uh, as an improvement to the proposed development, we're, uh, expanding parking areas to provide, uh, significantly more parking, uh, for the development. Um. And in addition, providing, uh, new curbing and, um, repair and or replacement of concrete sidewalk throughout the right-of-way. Uh, additional landscaping is proposed, um, throughout, which results in an approximate increase in. One thousand, one hundred and sixty-three square feet of open space. Um, uh. It, according to the ordinance, a, the parking, surface parking lots are required to be buffered, uh, in, in totality. Uh, from the right-of-way, Ocean Avenue right-of-way specifically. Um, currently it is not. Uh, we're provide, providing additional buffering to the extent possible to, uh, alleviate this, however, still noted as a variance. Um. Uh, as Frank mentioned, the existing, uh, building. Um, is two stories actually, um, with renovations that propose three. However, the minimum. Building height is four stories, and, uh, we are only proposing three. That's why it's resulting in a variance. Um, we are improving the maximum lot coverage. However, we're still noting a variance, um, of ninety-four point, uh, ninety-nine. Ninety-nine existing, ninety-four point nine three proposed. Uh, this is a variance in subzone one. Um, because subzone two permits existing coverages, um, under proposed conditions. And just to quickly touch upon, um, proposed improvements, uh, to the drainage. Uh, under current consi, current conditions, there are no stormwater management measures that I know of. Um. As I said, the parking lot is in disrepair and the inlet within the parking lot is in total need of repair. We're proposing detention measures, uh, for the site to meet state regulations and J C M U A, J C M U A regulations. For the two-ten and hundred storm events, um, provides, uh, in my opinion, significant improvement to the property. Uh, as compared to existing conditions. Um. Lighting is proposed, um, to meet the Jersey City standards, uh, an improvement to what is currently there. And, um. Uh, we did receive an engineering review letter and, uh, planning review letter, and I take no exception in working with, uh, the engineer. In, um, satisfying the comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell you, I, I really got no questions.
We have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh, board members, anyone? Commissioners?
No.
I have, I don't have a question either. Okay. So you can just, uh, sharing your screen. We'd appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Regan, we're going to go ahead. We're, we're, that's it, right? You're done?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, sir, perfect. We're going to open up to the public. Um, and this is for application case number P two one dash zero nine two, one six five Ocean Ave. Anyone from the, here to speak, ask the question. Raise your hand, star nine on the phone.
Promoting Cheryl. Cheryl Morrison has been promoted.
Okay.
Shall I swear, Ms. Morrison, in, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, let's see if she can. Yeah, perfect. Ms. Morrison, if you can turn your camera on and unmute yourself. Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Yes, uh, there you go. Perfect.
Ms. Morrison, please raise your right hand. Yes, where that you will, uh, tell the truth, the whole truth, and the, the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Please, uh, state your full name and your address, please.
Uh, Cheryl Morrison, uh, two fourteen Garfield Ave, New Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Ms. Morrison, you have three minutes.
Okay, um, just very concerned about the parking. Um, I understand right now fifty-nine hundred square feet of the, of the old bank building is being utilized. They're adding, uh, two floors, really essentially tripling the square footage. In this, uh. in this former bank building. I'm very happy it's a medical building. My problem really is with the parking. When you look at all the plans and you look at specifically across the three floors, you're looking at, again, I know this is full capacity, looking at twenty-three receptionist spots, forty-nine dental treatment areas, a hundred and fifty seating area chairs. That doesn't, the people that will fill those areas. The forty-eight parking spaces will be taken up by just the staff. The area is a desert for parking. It's a food desert. It's a parking desert. We do not have, we do not have enough parking in that Greenville section. I'm part of the Garland Lock Association. This, it's, this is an issue that's, parking is, we understand it's a very major issue all over the city, but it's extremely critical in the Greenville section, which is developing. I own a property. If I don't find parking within five blocks, I actually leave Jersey City and go to another property that I do not own and stay there. I can't even use my property in Jersey City because of the parking issues, and I will not walk five blocks to my house for safety concerns. We do not have municipal parking lots. We don't have a garage, and I understand the sustainability issues with that. We don't want to impede the sustainability goals of Jersey City. But we also, robo taxis aren't here yet. We still need place, places to put the robo taxis when they come. We need some type of parking relief in the area, and I'm glad the dental building, if you approve it tonight, it goes through. It's a great thing, but the parking issues are major deterrents for me personally and a lot of people in the area. This is a, well, I don't have it on my screen, but this is, this is where the parking garage is located in Jersey City downtown, the waterfront. There is nothing in Greenville, zip, nothing. And there are people that would pay for parking if we built some type of facility that could be retrofitted later when we all go to electric cars. We just need something where we can park our vehicles. And I've written, I've written memos to our ward leader and council at large. We've made a stance from our association, but this is my concern, but thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Anyone else? I see somebody else's hand up.
Yes, I'm going to promote two oh one, nine three six, nine two three four. Or actually, I just have to allow them to talk.
Hello, can you hear us? Two oh one?
Yes, I can. Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Can you state, spell your name for the record?
F T A.
Yes.
I'm sorry, ma'am. If you can start stating your name again and spelling that for me, please, and your address.
My name is Stacy Stembridge. My address is one two four Pierso Avenue.
And spell your last name for me, please.
S T E M B R I D G E.
And ma'am, just before you comment, Mr. Regan, I just want to be clear for the public. You're not seeking a parking variance in connection with this application, are you?
We are not. The requirement is five spaces, and we're proposing forty-eight.
Well, my thing is, I.
Ms. Stembridge, before you begin, do you swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth this evening?
Yes, I do. I do. Okay.
Mrs. Stembridge, this is Dr. Gonzalez, the acting chair today. You have three minutes, okay? Please, go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. I live right next to the lot, the bank lot, okay? Now, number one, I want to talk about how unsightly it is. Someone has left a mattress in a box spring. They are letting the weeds grow up, and I live right here, so that's inviting other animals and so forth. Okay, that's one thing. Secondly, I would like some kind of landscaping across, so I don't have to look into the bank and see all of these cars and people and so forth. Further down, my neighbors in back of me, on that property, there's a tree that is leaning on the fence, which is about to fall like any minute. So they need to take care of that as well, and those are my major concerns. Okay, and I wanted to maintain my quality of life. I've lived in this house for years. Okay, and I've seen different banks come and go. I've seen gas stations before the senior citizen building was built. So I've been here for quite some time. So what I am asking is to help me maintain my quality of life. Okay?
Mr. Regan, can you identify her piece on the, the plan for yourself and your client? Is, is that something you guys, were you able to get that based on what she was?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe there's just one property that, that is adjacent to the parking lot.
And is it possible?
That, and I'm sorry to cut you off, and the other house behind me is adjacent to the back of the bank where the tree is, which is leaning.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, with respect to the existing condition of the property, we, I, you know, we'll, I'll work with the applicant, and we'll, we'll try to get that cleaned up immediately. But obviously, what's being proposed here are significant improvements to the property. So hopefully, it improves the existing condition considerably.
And I'm hopeful and prayerful. And also about the drainage, there is one specific area that is on Ocean and Pierso where there a lot of water collects in that area. So just for your own, you know, benefit, you might want to check that drainage system out there because that gets really flooded. I understand the improvement with the bank lot, but I understand that I don't want to see all of that traffic either. So that's why I'm proposing, you know, I'm asking you to please put up some kind of landscape, you know, so I don't have to look into that. And I'm, I'm happy that it's going to be a bank, I mean, dental office instead of a, you know, residential building, so that, that's where I'm.
Thank you, Mrs.
Have to say.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Stembridge.
All right.
Appreciate your time.
Not a problem. I appreciate you guys listening.
Thank you. We always welcome you guys, the public. I think we have somebody else hand raised? Mr. Secretary?
Promoting Chris Perez.
Okay.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
Mr. Perez, please raise your right hand. Do you swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name and your address, please.
Christopher Perez, P E R E Z, thirty-nine Van Nostrand Avenue.
Thank you. Witness this one.
Mr. Perez, you have three minutes today, okay?
Yep, that should be fine. So I'm going to talk on two accounts. My name is Chris Perez. I'm the president of the Jersey City Landmarks Conservancy. And I had a question about the proposed improvements of the building. Obviously, it's a historic building. If you know anything about the trust banks from the turn of the century to the twenties, these banks were instrumental in creating financial opportunities, especially for immigrants, to create businesses on our main streets, and a lot of them have obviously shifted to other uses. I'm a little concerned about signage. Is there any proposal for any kind of signage on the building that might cover any of the historic qualities of the building? Where are you going to be putting signage? Because I didn't see that being clear on any of the renderings. So from a landmarks perspective, we're glad to see that you guys are not going to do any changes to the facade, but I was concerned about the signage, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about that to make sure it doesn't interfere with the historic nature of the structure. And then just to echo the person who just spoke before, I was looking at the plans, and I was looking at the current configuration of the parking. It looks like there's going to be parking now right into her property line. So I think that her, I'd like to echo that it might be a kind gesture on your applicant's part to create some kind of landscaping barrier, so she doesn't have to look into all that. And that's my testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Mr. Regan?
Yeah, let me just start with, with what I can respond to with respect to the adjoining neighbor. There is landscaping that's being proposed in, in the two corners of the parking lot adjacent to that, to her property. So that, I mean, that will be an improvement to what currently exists. In order to maximize the parking on site, we really don't have the ability to provide landscaping sort of between those two landscaping pods. And I don't know if it's, might be easier just to bring up the site plan again, just so that we can point that out. What we could do is, is there's an existing fence, I believe, on the neighbor's property. I'm assuming we could install a fence possibly between the landscaping, you know, to, to provide further screening. So I don't, would you like us to bring up the site plan, Mr. Chairman, to, to point that out, or?
Sure, if you want to, real quickly.
Trevor, you want to bring up the site plan real quick? And maybe you can just point the area out that we're taught, the, the neighbor's property, who, who made the comment.
Right, I, I agree with you, Frank. You know, to satisfy everybody's requests, more parking, you would lose parking if you, if you landscaped this portion back here. But I, I like the fence idea. Maybe it's a, you know, a white vinyl fence, something that looks nice, that, you know, you don't, you can't see the parking that, you know, separate this area back here between the masonry garage and the proposed landscaping. Something along those lines.
So counsel, I think that's something that you guys should consider, and quite frankly, if you could reach out to the neighbor and, and see if she would prefer that the white fence you're proposing be installed.
Yes, I think we can arrange to do that. I think we can arrange to do that. And I don't know if you have the plans that show the signage.
I do. Actually, I can bring them up.
So yes, to, to your point, we, we can clearly coordinate with the neighbor to, to try to, you know, provide as best screening as we can in addition to the landscaping that we're proposing. We have no problem with that.
Right. And, and just before I, I show, this, this is the sign. It's very minimalistic. It's six foot by three point two five feet. Location number one is permitted by ordinance on the entrance street. Where you enter the building, you're permitted one sign, and that would be at the entrance. The second sign is replacing what was previously an existing sign. Same sign on the Lembeck Avenue facade. However, this is noted as a variance because it's not an entrance to the actual building. However, we are replacing it in almost the exact same manner. I, I do have two exhibits of what they, it's a mock-up that was done, if you'd like.
I don't know, you want, would you like to see that, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Okay.
So Ocean Avenue frontage where the entrance is very minimalistic, not to impair any of the existing historical, you know, architectural elements. And the second on the Lembeck Avenue frontage would replace the existing sign location. I believe the existing, it looks like an existing sign was located in that spot. It's no longer there. But as you can see, very minimal, very minimalistic. We're, we're doing our best to keep this as, you know, inconspicuous as possible while still allowing for people to recognize what building this is.
Right.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Okay, I think, anyone else from the public? Anyone else?
So the hand that's raised is the phone number that spoke first.
That was, Council Alampi, that was the, already, we called that number up. I don't know if it's a different person.
No, that was the neighbor that was concerned about the screening, and counsel has already represented that they are willing to install a fence, but that they will speak to the neighbor to see if they can coordinate. Mr. Regan, I assume that that fence, would it be of the six-foot height or the four-foot height?
Look, and we'll work with planning staff to, to make sure that it complies with, with, with the, the city's ordinance. So whatever, whatever between planning staff and working with the neighbor and, and the applicant, I think we can, we can provide, you know, the, the appropriate height, you know, to, to, to provide the necessary screening.
So chairman, I don't think that we need to, to do this on the record. That's something that the applicant is willing to do, and he can do that directly with the neighbor and planning staff for his representation to this board.
Okay, agreed. And they lowered their hand, so I just wanted to make sure it was not like another person that wanted to speak from the same phone. Okay, anyone else from the public? I don't see anyone else. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, seeing normal public, would like to close the public portion of the meeting.
Okay, public is closed. And this is Mr. Crehal again.
Planning is very happy to see this kind of adaptive reuse and development in this area. Basically, no one wants to see an empty building in a parking lot. So in planning's opinion, the positives are overwhelmingly in favor over the detriments in this situation. I ask that the applicant work with neighbors to try to mitigate some of the issues with the lot, but at the same time, the, the neighbors can screen their own lot at the same time, just as much as the applicant can. So it's fair both ways, and if you feel the need to deal with it outside of this, this board, so do it. Other than that, planning approves the application.
Thank you, Mr. Crehal. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, would like to make, to make a motion to approve case P two-one-dash-zero-nine-two as presented to the board tonight.
Second it.
Second it.
Okay, motion made and second it. Roll call.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes, I'm just suggesting to the planning staff when they're looking at a fence for that parking lot that a neighbor requested. Not a big fan of the vinyl white final fences in certain neighborhoods. Might, might be nicer in other areas, but if there's a lot of traffic or a lot of children hanging out, they kind of get beat up, and then they don't look as good as they, you know, on store, but not in the city some areas. That's certainly keep in mind, but with that, I, I know the building pretty well, and I think something like that would be good for the neighborhood, so I vote aye.
Commissioner Regan.
So I think there's a lot of lots of possibilities on this project. I like it very much. But if you can just work with the neighbor in regards to the privacy, that would be very, very much appreciated. I vote aye.
Commissioner Allen.
It's good to see the building being repurposed. It's also good to see, like, a doctor's office, a dentist's office actually come in the area and is actually parking for the patients, so I'm a aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
I'm an aye. I just also want to add that I do appreciate when applicants, and I say this as a commission, I think the board in general appreciates when applicants work with the neighbors, especially in a situation like this, and they take it safety in consideration, you know, possibly any pollution, light pollution or car pollution. So I appreciate you going to work with them. I hope those are things are considered. Thank you.
Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Tocor.
Good project. I would aye.
And Acting Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
I think this is a great project, and it's needed in the area. I vote aye.
All in favor, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, Iris, we're just going to power through if that's okay with you? Good night. Okay, Iris, we're just going to power through if that's okay with you.
Yes, please. That's my.
Number 18 on our agenda, case P21-038. This is for a minor subdivision, address 124-126 Irving Street. I think we have Mr. O'Connell. We can confirm. All right, good evening, sir. I expect this to be quick and short.
I, it's not going to be the toughest case on tonight's schedule, that's for sure. But it is a notice case, Mr. Alampi, so.
Thank you, counsel. I am a receiver of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the minor subdivision application of 124-126 Irving Street. All does appear to be in order. We can mark those as a1 for the record.
Thank you. So we're listed as a minor subdivision. And actually, we're just configuring the lot line between the two lots. The lot is on the north side of Irving Street between Nelson and Kennedy Boulevard. 124 Irving Street, which is Lot 57, and the lot on the right side encroaches into 126 Irving Street, which is Lot 58, only in the rear section. And the encroachment is 8.80 feet by 19.52 feet. So all we're doing tonight is straightening out the lot line, separating the lots, so that each lot is 25 by 100, a buildable city lot. That's our application. I did notify Rudolpho Pierri, our surveyor, but I'm not sure if we need any testimony from him.
Counselors, I understand that this is what we like to refer to in common language as a lot line adjustment. So this board is very familiar with that, of course. Back when they were drawing the lines in Jersey City, they were crooked. So, Chairman, quite frankly, we've got a lot of these. We've personally straightened out a ton of lines here in the city. So why stop now?
So, yeah, this is very straightforward. I guess that's it, right? We can.
That's it.
We have to open up a public. Anyone in the public who wants to speak on this, this is case P21038, 124-126 Irving Street. Anyone from the public?
Mr. Chairman, seeing normal public, would like to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second it. Perfect. Public portion is closed. And I think this is also Mr. Crehal again.
Uh, no, that's me, actually.
Mr. Secretary, okay, go ahead.
Right, the secretary swooping in. So I'm asking Gene if you would agree for your client to the condition stated in the September 27th staff report uploaded to the data portal.
Absolutely, and we will use the shared driveway as you proposed.
Okay, super. With that, planning staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep.
Chairman would like to make a motion to approve case P21-038 with staff recommendations as presented to the board tonight.
Second it. Motion made and second it. I'll entertain roll call.
All right, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair, Tocor.
Aye for the straight line.
And for Chairman, Acting Chairman, Dr. Gonzalez.
I would aye.
Okay, motion carries on in favor with conditions.
All right, thanks for your time, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. All right, the next case is case number 19, case P21-064. This is for a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. Address is 352.5 Fifth Street. And I believe we have Mr. Murphy. We can prove out. Mr. Chris Murphy up.
I don't see Mr. Murphy. I'm, I've got two hands raised though, so I'm gonna, gonna start. Wanda.
Wanda Powell. Just promote both of them. Mr. Secretary, Frank, yeah.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have Frank Agliardi from Murphy, Schiller &amp; Wilkes.
Hi, Frank. Is Wanda Powell a part of your team?
I do not know. I have Alan Feld that I'm going to ask to be promoted. Other than that, I do have the applicant, but it's only if you have any questions of that.
Okay, I'm going to.
Miss Powell, you're muted. You can unmute yourself and identify yourself.
Yes, this is Wanda Powell. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. What application are you with?
With the P21038.
That's already?
Yeah. We're 126 Irving Street.
All right, that was just approved, Miss Powell.
I know we were trying to get through and they just wouldn't let us get through.
Okay.
Is this Mr. Powell? Is that what it is? Sorry, so this is Acting Chair, Dr. Gonzalez. That was already closed. We didn't see the hand up. Unfortunately.
I've been trying and for some reason, like I watched you from 5:30, that it goes out, it slows down. The same thing happened to me.
Well, there's nothing we can do at this moment because obviously we've already closed that. No one is available to take any more testimony, no more questions on that. That has been.
So you're telling me that the new people that are building on the side of my house are going to take land from me that I paid for?
Mr. Powell, are you saying that you own one of the lots?
No, I own 128 Irving.
126.
128, Wanda, we own.
We don't own 128. This is 126 Irving.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
This is Santo Alampi. I am the attorney to the board.
Yes.
Do you own Lot 57?
Um, no, I do not.
Do you own Lot 58?
No, I do not.
Okay, you own address 128 Irving Street.
That is exactly right.
Okay, that is next door to these two lots, which were the subject of the lot line adjustment.
Exactly.
But your concern is that somehow they are going to take property from you?
Yes, by changing the lines. Because as I was speaking to the contractor, he told me that where the line is now, he's going to leave it at that. But now you're telling me that since he put the two buildings together, he's going to take a little from my side now?
No. They're taking from in between the two lots to make them perfect rectangles.
I can share my screen and I can show how it's being changed. Or you can call the planning department tomorrow and you can.
Cameron, we have the gentleman. He's waited on the line since 5:30. I know the chairman wants to move on to the other application, but let's share the screen.
Okay.
No, I'm okay with sharing, counsel.
Five hours is a long time.
Yes.
So can.
Okay, sir, can you see that?
Yes, that. I see that.
You are Lot.
He's Lot.
I think I'm Lot 59. If I'm, because I'm on the side going toward Nelson Street.
Okay, yeah, you are Lot 59.
I'm on Lot 59.
So there's a zigzag in the middle.
Okay, that's between 58 and 57.
Correct.
That has nothing to do with me, so that doesn't bother me.
That's what the adjustment, sir. That's the adjustment. 58 will now be a rectangle and so will 57.
Yeah. Um, there's no space in between 57 and 58. Those buildings are being made as one building.
They are technically not one building. They are technically two separate properties with a shared wall. And the purpose of the application is so that 58 can be sold and 57 can be sold and everybody gets 25 by 100, presumably just like your property.
Okay, so presumably it'll be the same line. Where they just.
The line will be straight now.
Okay.
In between those two properties, it will have no impact on your property.
Yeah.
What they're proposing. If you have another issue, that's something else I know nothing about.
Okay, that's another small problem. One of their garages that leads straight into their place, there's a pump right in front of it, a fire hydrant.
They are going to have a shared driveway in the middle of the lots.
By the, by the looks of the house, there's two garages.
There are two garages, one curb cut in the middle and then they tee off into the garages.
All right. No problem then.
All good, Mr. Powell. That ends well, right?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to touch base on that, just to be sure. You gentlemen have a good evening.
You too now.
Okay, thank you. I'm out.
You're out. Okay, thank you. Mr. Agliardi, I am sorry.
No problem, no problem.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioner. I just want to, this is a notice case, so I just want to confirm receipt, Mr. Alampi.
Thank you, counsel. I am a receiver of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 352.5 Fifth Street here in the city. All does appear to be in order. We'll mark that as a1 for the record.
Thank you. So just to get into it right away, this is a simple addition to an existing home. There's going to be an addition of approximately 760 square feet of living area. There's going to be a removal of a masonry shed and a pergola that's in the rear of the property. There will also be an installation of a new fire escape in the rear. And the rear is going to be all permeable pavers now. The application does require two deviations. One for a rear yard setback, which is being just pushed a bit. And another for impervious coverage. This is actually a pre-existing condition on the property. And with the removal of the masonry shed and the pergola in the back, the applicant is actually lessening the the, lessening the impervious coverage. So if there are no other questions, I would just, I'm going to turn it over to our architect, Alan Feld, and have him go into an overview of the project and some justifications for the deviations.
Thank you, Mr. Agliardi.
Mr. Feld, please raise your red hand. Do you swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name and your address, please.
Alan Feld, F E L D, 930 Newark Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you. I miss this one.
So Alan, if you could just benefit, or give your credentials for the benefit of the Commissioners.
So Agliardi, that's why Mr. Feld is known to us. Just a couple of questions. Your license is active, Mr. Feld?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead.
Thank you. And Alan, do you want me to share my screen?
I can do it. I can try to do it. Is it up?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes, we have it up.
Okay. So this, this is an existing three-family, three-and-a-half-story building on Fifth Street. An addition.
I'm sorry, Mr. Feld, please hold one moment. Is someone's microphone is not muted and there's a lot of feedback? Okay.
Okay. So the addition we're proposing is the three-and-a-half stories to match the existing three-and-a-half stories. And this would be at the rear of the building. There is this property faces Fifth Street, but also at the rear is the alleyway between the property and the embankment behind it. So there's no neighbors behind this property. There was, there is a masonry shed in the back, which is going to be demolished and replaced with pervious pavers and landscaping. As noted, the required setback in this zone is 30 feet and we're providing 15 feet. The rationale for that is when we did some preliminary layouts for the proposed renovation of the building, it was inadequate for the bedrooms at the rear and this additional five feet would make it a much more livable space once the renovation is completed. So that's the scope of the project.
Right, and just going through.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt for the record, I do have to recuse on this. I just noticed on the list that I do represent a property owner within the 200 feet, so just reflect that for the record. Obviously, this is known to the board that this happens from time to time. And you guys generally proceed without counsel on an application of this nature.
Thank you, Mr. Alampi. I'll go ahead and make sure that Mr. Agliardi is okay with that, knowing that there is no attorney on our end.
Yes, I understand. We're okay with that.
Okay.
Chairman, I believe it's customer that if there's any issues that come up, we reserve the right to defer to a different time when we can get representation.
Absolutely. I think that they've already said that they're okay with that. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Horton. Are you, Mr. Agliardi, are we done with Mr. Feld?
I just have, I just have one question, just in your, in your opinion, as an architect, Mr. Feld, do you believe that the benefits outweigh any type of detriment, if any, you know, going on with this property?
Yes, I believe this would be an improvement to this property and to the neighborhood by creating a more livable space for the tenants and the owner of this property. And also, this would have no negative impact on the neighbors or the community since it backs up onto an alleyway, basically having no neighbors at the rear of this property.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. I appreciate it. Then I'll just, I'll just finish up with a quick, quick little closing. I do want to, I do want to say that we've read over the September 22nd engineering memo and the September 28th staff report and we see no, no reason as to not comply with everything that was set forth in those reports. And, yep, and we just hope that you look favorably on this application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Agliardi. Any questions for Mr. Feld from the Commissioners? And while we wait for them, Mr. Feld, can you stop sharing your screen for us?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, I think we're, at this point, we'll open it up to the board, I mean, sorry, to the public. And this is case P21-064. Anyone from the public who wants to ask a question or speak on this case? I think we only have three attendees. Anyone? No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, seeing normal public, would like to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Second it. Okay, the public is closed. And I think we have Mr. Crehal again.
Thank you, Chairman, Dr. Gonzalez. The variance is repressed in minor nature. Planning approves the application.
Thank you, sir. That's easy. Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to approve case P21-064 that was presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Motion.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Tocor.
Aye.
And Acting Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
All in favor, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. All right, I'll entertain a motion for memorialization of resolutions. Well, can we get, can we get Alampi, Mr. Alampi back in? Is he there? Well, can we get, uh, can we get Alampi, Mr. Alampi back in? Is he there? Uh, nope. There you go.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone?
A motion for memorializing resolutions.
Okay.
Now, who, somebody needs to read him. Uh, for the record. Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair, would like to uh, memorialize the following. Case number P two one dash zero one six. Ninety one dash ninety three, ninety three Pierce Hall Avenue, minor subdivision approval with a variance. Case number P two dash zero five nine, address one forty three dash one forty five Monticello Avenue. Preliminary and final major site plan. Case number P two one dash zero two four, address two seventy three dash two seventy nine Columbia Avenue with minor subdivision. Case number P two one dash zero one zero, address two seventy five dash two seventy nine Pierce Hall Avenue with minor subdivision approval with C variances. Case number P two one dash zero five four, five sixty dash five eighty Marine Boulevard and one thirty dash one fifty, Twelfth Street. Extension of preliminary and final major site plan approval. Case number P two one dash zero nine zero, five seven five, uh, five three two Summit Avenue. Final major site plan administrative amendment approval. That's it.
I'll need a second.
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 Thank you, Commissioner Horton was first. Okay, all righty, so um, any, do we need an executive session?
I have a question for the council.
Okay, he's, he is here or there.
Is he there?
I'm here for you, Commissioner.
Okay, I just wondered if the um, did you meant that the lines were crooked in Jersey City? Or the people that hit the lines were crooked in Jersey City? I wasn't sure where you were going with that at the time, so. Well, we have no comment, one or the other.
I have no comment.
Okay, okay. That's a good one. All right. But we're straight in the mouth, baby.
Do you uh, do you have anything else, uh?
No, that's all I had. Give me peace of mind.
Chair, you did a fabulous job tonight. Ten twenty, ten twenty two.
Air and Vice Chair.
I was trying to do it earlier, but uh, you know, it, it was a little complicated. But we had a good court reporter. We might have, we might have replaced our other guy. What's his name again?
Mike. I'm just joking. You are a hardworking board, I have to say. It's, it's a long evening for you.
You know, we are a good board, aren't we?
You are, actually. It was a pleasure working with all of you, so thank you. Being as gentle as you could all.
With your kind words, uh.
I'll remember, everybody, we're back in a week, October fifth.
Wow.
I won't be here, yeah.
October fifth?
Yeah.
That quickly.
Calendar.
Okay.
Cameron, are we, we doing a special on Thanksgiving? Is, is that a go?
You know, I, I have the calendar um, in my kitchen. Once, I can check, one second.
No, 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 no.
November thirtieth, but let him go check.
Wake him up.
Is everyone here gonna be um, here for the fi- uh, next week?
I'm here.
I, I'm not. You are?
But that's a regular scheduled meeting or that's an extra?
No, no, that's uh.
That's a regular.
Yeah, it's the regular. They, I know they requested one for November.
So there's October fifth, there's October nineteenth, there's November ninth, and there's November twenty third.
Thanksgiving weekend.
Yeah, special.
They were asking about a November thirtieth date I thought I saw being circulated as a special.
Yes.
Am I losing my mind?
It was just a site plan thing.
Master plan I thought was.
Yeah, master plan.
What they were looking to accomplish.
Okay, that's something being, you know, contemplated by Mallory and uh, Elizabeth. Um, so I, I, I would kind of work with that.
Does anyone have a word going back in person?
Oh, Commissioner Gangadin asked about the in-person. I, I don't, I don't, haven't heard anything.
I'm sorry?
Twenty twenty two.
Okay, okay. That gives us some time.
Yeah, that's what I heard too. Um, look forward to seeing all of you in person, but uh, all right, anything else?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to uh, to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Awesome, we're adjourned. Thanks, guys. Good job.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.